Good evening. I'd like to call the February 24th, 2015 Longmont City Council Meeting to order. This is a regular session. Could we please start with a roll call?
Yes, Mayor Coombs.
Here.
Councilmembers Bagley.
Here.
Christiansen.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
Levison.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Santos.
Here.
Mayor Coombs, we have a count, oh, quorum.
Okay, let's stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in its whole with liberty and justice for all.
Anyone wishing to speak at first call, publicly invited to be heard, will need to add his or her name to the list outside the council chambers. Only those on the list will be invited to speak at first call, publicly invited to be heard. Speakers who do not place their name on the list will have an opportunity to speak during the public hearing items this evening, or at final call, publicly invited to be heard on any item at the end of the meeting. So next, we have the approval for the February 10th, 2015 meeting. Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move we approve the minutes of that meeting.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, so let's vote. Okay, that's seven to zero. Valerie, are there any agenda revisions?
Mayor Coombs, there are no revisions to the agenda, but there was an item that was emailed to you. It was just additional information for 8C, which is the funding chart for the final allocations for CDBG and home funding. That's it.
Is there a report from the city manager?
Yes, Mayor, council. As a result of one of the items that we had in the city council meeting last week, there's been a number of questions regarding the financial issues associated, or questions related to financials with Village at the Peaks. And so today, I wanted staff to give a presentation in terms of those financials to council, so that you can have all of that information. I wanted to say, I should have had staff, and I should have presented that information to you at the last one. I apologize. And we'll make sure that that doesn't occur again as we have these types of issues come before you. So David will give the presentation.
Okay, great. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. David Starnes, Redevelopment Division, City of Longmont. So, following up on Harold's comments, I'm here to kind of give you an update on the latest financial fiscal impact of Village of the Peaks based on the latest site plan. And this was prompted, you know, once in response to the presentation last week by Mr. Allen Ginsburg, in terms of his update to the community, in terms of the changing start date for Sam's Club, as well as the latest site plan information we have. So, just to kind of give you a bit of background before I get to the number stuff. And so, we've updated the model, and it reflects a couple of things. One, it reflects a January 2017 opening day for Sam's Club at the latest. It reflects the latest tenant and site plan information, and this is reflective of the announcements by Mr. Ginsburg, and for the tenants that have committed to Village of the Peaks to date. We've given very conservative assumptions in terms of sales per square foot. In terms of ranges that typically retailers by different tenant types provide, we're very much in the low end of all the ranges, just to be conservative in terms of our numbers and figures. And in some instances, we're one-third less than what the average of particular large tenants may be. Just to kind of give you an idea, so, as you know, the project in the first couple of years doesn't start generating a lot of revenue in terms of the property tax. That comes in two years after the assessment of the two-year lag on that. And so, in the first couple of years, 2015, 2016, actually particularly 2016, the most of the revenue coming in to service the debt on the COP is coming from the property tax increment, I'm sorry, the sales tax increment. After that has been met, after the payment of the COP, the balance, and this is excess revenue available to the general fund and PIF, is approximately $76,000. So again, after we make the debt service payment of a 1.2 million, we have approximately $76,000 left over available to the general fund. And just to keep you an idea, because before, you know, we ran it with Sam's Club in 2016, you know, being full and operating. So, with them out, we estimated, you know, Sam's Club generates about 1.78 million annually in sales tax to the city. That's at 3.275 percent. Or, if you include the 2 percent, which is what's been pledged to service the debt on the COP, that's about 1.1 million, to give you an idea. So, I'm going to kind of look through this table here, for the benefit of you and the community. So, I kind of showed for the first five years, well, for 2016 through 2020, how much revenue is coming in, what are annual COP payments are, how much excess revenue is available to the general fund and PIF, and then other tax revenue coming to the city because of the project. So, in the far left, is basically the project tax revenue available for debt service. And this is basically from three main things. This includes property tax increment, as part of the Urban rental authority. It includes the city's 2% non-year mark sales tax increment generated by the project. It also includes the Metro District mill levy and special ownership tax. Again, this is a self-assessment by the property owner of 25 mils on the property values that is being pledged to service the debt on the COP. And so you can see for year 2016, it's about 1.35 million. Our COP payment, 1.2 million, and leaves that balance excess of 76,000. However, at the same time, the city continues to receive additional revenue from the project. And this is from the, what we call the base property tax. So basically, when we established the Tiff district, we froze the base property tax value based on what is there now. And that's, that value, plus the base sales tax, plus the, what we call the earmarked sales tax. And this is the 1.275 percent sales tax that is not going back into pledge to the debt, but instead is going back to the five funds that the city has as earmarked.
So I want to point out, on the base sales tax piece, right now in the budget, we have zero plugged in, in terms of sales tax coming in from that location. So that is an additional, what's that number, David?
Sales tax. Seven hundred and thirty-two thousand.
So that's the additional revenue coming in that's considered the base.
So I can see, in terms of the annual COP payment, the first couple of years were lower. This is how we structured the COP, 1.2 million, 1.8 million. And basically, from 2018 on, the annual payment of the COP ranges around 2.1 to 2.2 million. And so you can see, as the project fills up in space, and the two-year lag in the property tax increment comes into play, where we collect it, for example, it's a property assessed in 2016, we don't actually collect that increment property tax until 2018, is how Boulder County does it. And so you can see the big bump, from 76,000 excess to 753,000 excess in 2017, up to 1.9 million, 2.4 million in 2019, and down from there. And at the same time, on the far-right column is this other tax revenue that I mentioned. This is, again, the base property tax, the base sales tax, and the earmarked 1.275 sales tax increment. And after the project is stabilized, it averages about 2.5 million dollars that's coming to the city that's not there now.
Okay, so I have a council member, Levison, would you ask a question?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for putting that up. So, how much of the, you know, I really would like to see the Public Improvement Fund and the general fund revenue in those years separated out, only because I have been a stickler for so many years on this project to say, we have to have some measure of general fund revenue. Because even though we do get the police safety tax for general police calls and everything, we want to make sure that there is general fund revenue for servicing, maybe there'll be small businesses that need the small business programs. Things will have an impact from this development on the general fund. And I want to make sure, at least we have enough money in the general fund that's being generated by this project to service those needs, and not cost shift into other programs. So, in the future, it would be really useful to be able to tell, because the Public Improvement Fund is kind of one-time money, isn't it?
Well, that's an annual allocation that's coming in on the base of that. Now, we tend to use the Public Improvement Fund for those capital projects. But what we can do is we can break that out, because I think that piece that you're talking about is that additional revenue. When we talk about, you know, a few years ago, when we were seeing the sales tax decline on the mall, we basically removed that out of the budget. And so, it's that additional dollar amount that's coming back into the budget as the base, that's going straight into the general fund that we can break out for you, so you can see how that gets into the overall revenue allocation. So that's an easy thing for us to do.
And then I guess I would like to, knowing that there are hiccups along the way, I would like to see some kind of catastrophic hiccup built into 2020. Because what happens if Whole Foods opens, and five years from after the opening, they decide they want to exit this market? Because there's really not any period of time that we set in the agreement for how long that natural food grocer has to operate. So, I'd like to see something in the modeling to have, you know, the Death Star component thrown in. Just throw Monkey Ridge in, and see where it goes. Can we sustain those payments if the big players are not contributing?
Yes, the model setup, so we can run very sensitivity analysis based on different scenarios, so.
And I think when we do that, we'll obviously have to work with the developer, because they have contracts over terms that will provide that. But there's some other slides that David has, that I think provides you some more information in terms of that type of issue.
And I'm going to show some updates in terms of, you know, basically the allocation of the source rate payment, and how the sales tax comes into play. So you can see in 2016, this pie chart kind of shows our payment of 1.272 million. And during those early years, before the property tax comes into play, about 87% of the source of payment comes from the city's 2%, with the balance of 13% from the Metro District revenue. So as the project fills out, it switches, and it switches dramatically. So, here's an example of a 2019 COP repayment. The debt service is 2.1 million, and you can see that the property tax increment accounts for 68% of that payment. Metro District revenue, 30%. And what's remaining to service the debt comes from the 2%, and that's about 2% of the total COP payment. And so, once the project is stabilized, and the increment starts to collect, 98% of the payment will come from property tax and the Metro District revenue. And this kind of shows over the full 23-and-a-half-year COP period, how it shakes out in terms of the source of repayment from the different pledged revenue. And you can see, property tax increment, again, that's 86 mils, 63% of the, basically, our 27.5 million dollar bond is a 49.3 million dollar payment, when you apply the interest. 63% is coming from the property tax, 29% from the Metro District revenue, 3% is our capitalized interest payment, and that's basically this year and last year in terms of payments. And the balance, which is the sales tax increment, the 2%, amounts to about 5% of the total repayment. So it kind of gives you an idea here of how dependent we are in terms of the sales tax to repay this COP over a period of time, to kind of give you some perspective. And that's all I got in terms of a formal presentation, if there's any other questions.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So, I just had brownie, so it'll be interesting to see if folks at home can tell. Let me just ask the question that I think that at least weighs on my mind, and if I'm in the audience or at home or reading the paper, this is what I want to know. Let me give you a what-if scenario. And that what-if scenario is, in the event, heaven forbid, Sam's Club says, you know what, we're postponing it indefinitely. What impact does that have on the city's commitment to Newmark Merrill? Meaning, we've put up 27.5 million bucks, so in the event that Sam's Club says, you know what, we're no longer going forward, how would that impact the city's obligation with our partner, Newmark?
Sure. You got a question prior to Harold or Eugene to chime in?
I think that's the big one. That's what people want to know.
So, obviously, the answer is that we have a redevelopment agreement. And in that redevelopment agreement, there are a number of things that we would need to talk to council with in an executive session. And it is legal strategy that we would have to look at the various options that we have at play in that agreement.
And what would those options be?
Eugene?
But I know it's attorney-client privilege, but my point is, do we just go, oops? Or are there options?
There are options within the redevelopment agreement. We're evaluating those with special counsel. I wouldn't feel very comfortable revealing those strategies to the public before I've had a chance to talk to council about those.
But there are, it's not just you go, oh, man, that stinks.
No, there are options.
Okay, just making that clear.
There are options.
All right, thanks. That was what you, I was asking a question to bring an issue to light. Thanks.
Okay, I don't see any other questions. Okay.
Council, any questions for Mr. Ginsburg?
Thank you.
Councilmember Christiansen?
Why is this being delayed? I mean, has Sam's Club given any reason?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. So, Sam's Club, you know, they're a big organization, we all know that. They slot their stores in on a calendar, and clearly, their goal early on has been to open the store soon and start construction. You know, we were trying to beat the winter, it just couldn't happen. So as far as in there right now, you know, that's what's going on, so.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So it's their, because they're building their building, you're not.
Yes, they own their own property, yeah.
Just made it make that clear. So it's not your construction schedule, it's their.
It's their construction schedule. They own it, they control it.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Thanks for bringing this forward and making this all public.
Thanks, council. And again, I apologize that we didn't do that with the presentation last time.
Okay, so next, I have a proclamation designating the month of February as Black History Month in Longmont, Colorado. So first, I'll read the proclamation. Proclamation designating the month of March 2015 as Black History Month in action in Longmont, Colorado. Whereas, for generations, the story of American progress has been shaped by the indistinguishable, yeah, indistinguishable belief that change is always possible and a brighter future lies ahead. Whereas, with tremendous strength and abiding resolve, our ancestors, some of whom were brought to this land in chains, wove their resilience, dignity into the fabric of our nation, and taught us that we are not trapped by the mistakes of history. It was those truths that found expressions as foot-shoulders and freedom riders, sat in and stood up, marched and advocated for justice and equality. And whereas, the audacious movement gave birth to a new era of civil and voting rights, and slowly, we renewed our commitment to an ideal at the heart of our founding. No matter who you are, what you look like, how modest your beginnings, or your circumstances of your birth, you deserve every opportunity to achieve your God-given potential. And whereas, like the countless quiet heroes who worked and bled far from the public eye, we know, with enough effort, empathy, and perseverance, people who love their country can change it. Let us continue that unending journey toward a more just, and more equal, and more perfect union. Now therefore, I Dennis O'Coons, Mayor, by the virtue of authority vested in me and the city council of the City of Longmont, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2015 as Black History Month in action in Longmont, and invite all to help our nation live up to this immense promise. And I believe we have Strider Benson as one of the recipients to come down and, would you like to make a statement? Or, oh, we've got some other guests, too. Yeah, please come forward, and if anybody would like to speak first, and then we'll make the...
Oh.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. I appreciate this greatly. And I, I just learned about it last night, although we dinner introduced it a week ago. But I would like to make one statement that Black History is American history. It is absolutely impossible to understand American history without understanding the role and the struggles of Black people within this country to achieve more inclusion from the country as a whole, more democracy, more democratization, and leading up for 100, 150 years up to the Civil Rights Movement, in which I was a late participant. Two very significant events, Freedom Summer and the Mississippi Freedom Democratic Party, and the winning of the Voting Rights Act in 1964, and then Selma and the right to vote. So I was active in those, but just a little, a little foothold in the struggle for freedom and democracy in this society. We must understand this if we're gonna understand today's world and how to do right within it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us here. Honored to Mayor Combs and the council members. Thank you for your commitment to celebrating diversity through all cultures. I believe it was in 1976 that President Gerald Ford declared the month of February as Black History Month. I want to say congratulations to Arkansas for receiving the proclamation and for the awesome price that you've paid for the freedoms that we all enjoy today. Thank you for your service as well. Next week, we'll be celebrating 50 years of Selma. So he's going to Selma. He was on the Edmund Pettus Bridge, and that was an awesome price then and there. Just as updates, Carmen Ramirez is going to be working with us to form the African-American Association of Longmont. And we've targeted three key events for 2016. They are Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday celebration in January, Black History Month designated in February, and Juneteenth celebrated on June 19th. The community is welcome to attend all of these events, and hopefully it would be, will be an educational experience. Thank you. God bless you.
Thank you. It's the best part.
Strider, can you hold that stuff for me?
Sure.
Here we go. Ready?
I'd kinda like to share this brief story. When Obama was inaugurated, you know, we went out, my wife and I did the inauguration. And after the speech, inauguration speech was, was over, I noticed this young black woman was just, was just much older, was off to the edge of the street. And she was just bawling her eyes out. So I thought she was hurt. And I went up to her and I asked her, can I help her? Is there anything wrong? And she said, you know, that this was the happiest day of her life and that, you know, what this meant to her and her children and the opportunities. So I don't know, it was just a real powerful moment in history. So, you know, thanks for people like Strider for making an event like that possible. Okay, I guess we have first call, public invited to be heard. Greg Iwan?
I'm Gregory Iwan, 1615 Sherman Way. Two examples of places that have suffered for policy come to mind. Warrenton, Virginia, where for decades, most development having anything to do with ordinary people or their consent was restricted. The golf course was okay, as were million-dollar homes. The first really new development came after the local economy suffered for more than two decades, while even tourists avoided the place. That new development was a Walmart. What imagination. The second place is Camden County, Missouri, just southwest of the Lake of the Ozarks, a spot well-known by a few who live here. There, a broad and open planning function was begrudgingly instituted only in 2003. Their hearts were not in it. The department, two people in the closet, was mainly for show. The local economy has at best gone sideways since. Coincidence? Possibly. Thriving, vibrant communities have a strong middle class, jobs that pay at least their living wage, and policies that tap into the wishes of the many, not the few. The real problem in both cases was incomplete representation. I wonder why a revamp of the Longmont Land Development Code would even be suggested? If a goal is less legalese, why set the city attorney as the gatekeeper? That individual would have emperor-like powers over objections to new development in the future you aim to prescribe. Has not the city attorney told you how much damage this Rosemary's baby can do to the civil rights of the voters who put you in those chairs? Think of the First and Fifth Amendments to the U.S. Constitution for starters. It is well to consider what kind of life you really want for Longmont citizens and what kind of legacy for yourselves. Everyone makes mistakes. The Bill of Rights originally had 12 amendments. Two were dropped. Thank you.
Richard Myron?
I'm Richard Myron, and I reside within Ward 3 at 2448 Dodd Lane here in Longmont. More importantly, I'm a 60% service-connected, permanently disabled Vietnam veteran due to Agent Orange. I served at Placu Vietnam during 1968, the wonderful year. Being service-connected means that my disability stems from acts or actions that occurred during my time that I served in the armed forces. Because of my service connection and permanent disability above the 50% level, the state of Colorado allows me, after being fully vetted with regard to providing both my service connection and disability above 50%, to obtain and display disabled veteran license plates on my vehicle. These are not a vanity plate that you can purchase at the county office. Disabled veteran plates are awarded by the state of Colorado only after a vetting process performed by the state itself. Any vehicle displaying disabled veteran license plates is allowed by state statute. Free entrance to all Colorado State Parks. Larimer County has provided the same benefit for at least the past 10 years. This includes Carter Lake and Horse Tooth Reservoir. Yet, the city of Longmont fails to follow the actions of the state of Colorado and Larimer County and thus not honor its service-connected, permanently disabled veterans by offering a free entrance to Union Reservoir. Vehicles displaying disabled veteran plates are still required to either pay a daily entrance fee or purchase an annual fee permit. The failure of the city of Longmont to offer such an action honoring our service-connected, disabled veterans, as proven, vetted, and verified by the display of state-issued disabled veteran plates, is an injustice to the sacrifices made by this group of veterans. I propose that the City Council of Longmont issue a proclamation, motion, ordinance, or other such formal decree directing the Parks Department, who I've had discussions with and they have no objection to, to correct this situation. I will be following up in the coming days with an information package for each of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Marshino.
Marshino?
You were close. My name is Judy Marshino, and I live at 1124 Purdue Drive in Longmont. A few weeks ago, I was watching TV. Not everybody watches CNN, but I occasionally do. And I saw the Director of the FBI, Mr. Comey, speak. And then the U.S. Attorney, Eric Holder. And they introduced a woman who was going to be the new head of a task force on human trafficking. When the FBI Director was speaking, he said, and I quote, "They are told that no one will listen. They are told that no one will care, and no one will help you." That brought a chill to me because I had a teenage girl in my house who echoed those very same words to me back in the 90s. I cared. I listened. And the people in our community helped. My friends and my church, the immigration department, the FBI, and the Justice Department were all involved. And they cared. And with their help, we protected her, secured her wages, and returned her safely to her country and her home and family. I know you think that, oh, human trafficking can't possibly be here in Longmont, but this all happened under your noses. She worked 15-hour days. She was a teenager. She was fed a piece of bread in the morning and a bowl of rice at 3:00. She cared for three children, a 7,500-square-foot house, and three dogs. And they were relentless. And they were abusive. There are people out there that are enduring the same thing. She was smuggled into our country with the knowledge and the assistance of the highest levels of the Ghanaian government. And they intended to do it again and again. And we, I feared for her life. I'm asking not for a department. I'm asking for one person that might work with this governmental task force that's being set up. It's obviously a problem that they feel they need to develop this new department. And to the citizens of Longmont, I ask you to keep your eyes open for someone and something that just doesn't seem right. And to listen and to care enough to say something, you just might save the life of someone. And you may show the true spirit of America. Thank you.
Thank you. Beverly Alkins?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Beverly Alkins, and I live at 1418 Ninth Avenue. I come here tonight with a heavy heart concerning stuff I saw on TV, too. This one was that you were going to hit us with eight dollars, or six dollars, I'm sorry, six dollars a month for curb composting. I brought to you my service, my bill from the city. If you look on it, my real use of everything on it, electric, water, trash, and sewer, comes to an amount of $33.24. What my bill is, is $77.35 right now. That's from fees and such that have been added to here. That, that's more than double what I have actually used. That's ridiculous. That is awful for someone who is on a low income, having a problem getting by. And you want to just, anytime you need something, you just stick it onto us? That's wrong. If you want this so badly, look other avenues. I have to live within my little skinny budget. You need to learn to do that, too. I get $330 a month social security. I got a raise last year. Yeah, last year I got $422. I got an $8 raise. You've already eaten it up with, with this year. We got electric, trash, water, and sewer raises. And then you guys gave yourself a raise. That was nice of you. Okay, going from there, there's other things that we need in this city. For one thing, we do not have a homeless shelter. That is a shame on us. A shame. We have lots of homeless people, including my son. My son, I worry about him night and day. He lives on the street. He lives, he has slept in a field. He told me he woke up with coyotes surrounding him. This is awful. We need to do something about that. Boulder has a homeless shelter, and Denver does. And we are worrying about curb composting? Are you serious? Denver just recently cut a ribbon saying they're fixing to build a pedestal thing that's made for the homeless that can come in the daytime and have tables and chairs and things where they can be. I mean, it's taking them off the street. That's good for everybody, that they don't hang around in their business and bother people or anything. If you put them in something useful, try to help them in some way, do that, too. But I'm telling you, I can't afford anymore of this tax, 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 I'm a fee, fee, fee. If you, I'm telling you something. Put this thing on a ballot. Let people vote on it. You'll lose. I promise you it won't go through because there's many, many people like this, like me. And if I have to, I'll be here every week to tell you about it and remind you of it. And if it doesn't, seems to not be going that way, if you need me to, I'll go get a petition. I'll get a lot of people to say the same thing to me if I am. Okay, thank you.
Joan Peck?
Hello, Mayor Combs and council members. My name is Joan Peck. I'm at 1935 Spreu7, and I'm here for a couple of reasons. First of all, to ask you to please drop all the proposed amendments to our land development code. I'm gonna read to you something from our constitution, which I'm sure you all know about, but it's just to remind you. This is from Article 2, Bill of Rights, Section 1, from our Colorado State Constitution. It says that all political powers vested in and arrive from the people, that all government of right originates from the people, is founded upon their will only, and is instituted solely for the good of the whole. I think that the amendments that you're proposing are unconstitutional. We're a representative government, and council members are the representatives of the people with decisions made based upon input from the people. Every amendment proposed in the, every, every one of these amendments proposed is aimed at removing those voices and giving it solely to developers and corporations. There's several issues and developments happening in our city. The airport expansion and noise levels, the development around Union Reservoir, as well as the St. Green Corridor development. There are many people in this city, along with some on council and staff, who would probably love to be able to close the doors on public input on all of those issues. This is not what a democracy does. It's not what a representative government does, and it may in fact be unconstitutional. Please drop all those proposed amendments. Don't fix, don't try to fix what is not broken. It's working the way it is. The other issues that I want to address are House Bill, hold on, House Bill 1119 and Senate Bill 15093, which are proposed oil and gas bills. These bills, I would like you to please not support. They are basically slapping the people and city, local governments who feel that they want to put in both regulations on gas and oil and bans on gas and oil. They want you to reimburse the gas and oil company if you put on regulations and bills for what they feel is a loss in their mineral rights. So since we already have a ban in place, I'm asking you, please do not support these bills. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ron Crenzel?
Good evening. Ron Crenzel, 1219 North 61st, Longmont, Colorado. I'm here tonight to speak of a negative campaign recently run by an organization called Citizens for Quiet Skies, which I will refer to as CQS. This group is formed by Kimberly Gibbs of Gundell, Colorado, also your Councilman Jeff Moore and his wife Ingrid Moore. Used a small piece of information to, very impressively, approximately seven days ago, they generated five front-page articles in the Times Call, all critical in some ways of the airport board, the airport, aviation in general, obviously mile skydiving, which is their target, which Igor looks very bad for the city and the city council. I was really disappointed, I must make one comment, in Sean Lewis, who failed to even support the Airport Advisory Board at all and immediately sided with CQS. Throughout all of these five articles that were published by Longmont Times Call and written, four of them by Karen Antonis, I think I pronounced it right, there was very few facts, almost no verification, no support from anyone else except what seemed to be the people who started this program. The other thing I questioned, what are the objectives of these people? I think it's very obvious. They have, she has, for several years, been very antagonistic to aviation, to skydiving, and to the development of the Longmont and the Boulder Airport. Her goals, I think, are very clear. The book, Goals of Quiet Skies, exposure, maybe some new customers, new members, and of course, she's trying to raise money for her lawsuit. It seems pertinent to me that the city of Longmont needs to defend in some way aviation in our city. And that probably means becoming involved in the Mile High Skydiving Lawsuit in support. Mile High is a property and a business and loosest property in the city as in an aviation entity. I think it was unfortunate that Councilman Moore and Sean took the position they did. I don't think it was Sean, really, I don't think he's involved in Quiet Skies. What goes on next? I think Councilman Moore is out of the closet, so it's not hard to figure out where he stands. But I hope that the city council continues to support aviation in Colorado and the Longmont Airport.
Thank you. You're three minutes for up. I appreciate it. Beyonce Gallegos?
I wish I was Beyonce, but my name is Bianca.
Oh, Bianca.
So, good evening, everybody. My name is Bianca Gallegos, and I'm at, oh, all right. Should probably move this down, too. All right. Good evening, everybody. My name is Bianca Gallegos. I live at 1085 Mallory Street in Lafayette, and I am a board member with this Boulder County Latino Chamber of Commerce. I want to thank you in advance for reviewing and hopefully authorizing the Economic Development Agreement with the Latino Chamber of Commerce, which is designed to support growth in the Latino business community. The MOU with the Latino Chamber of Commerce would support Latino and minority businesses by providing professional development opportunities, networking events, and the promotion of business assistance programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Berry?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Dan Berry. I live at 930 Champion Circle. And I'm here to speak on behalf of the airport. I started with this book called People Can't Drive You Crazy If You Don't Give Them the Keys. Now I changed this to Mile High Can't Drive Me Crazy because I'm not going to give them the keys, or the Airport Advisory Board Can't Drive Me Crazy because I'm not going to give them the keys. There's been a lot of drama in the paper lately about the airport. And that drama does offer a new conversation. It actually offers many different perspectives. And from this book, I just wanted to read a few things with, the problem with our perspective is we always think that we're right based on the information that we have. I'm the same way. But what I've realized is that I don't have all the facts. When I don't have all the facts, I fill in the blanks. I begin to make assumptions. And then I decide that those assumptions are accurate because they're my assumptions. And then, this is where it gets way tricky, is my emotions are based upon those assumptions, and I begin to act in emotional ways. And I think that's where we are right now. We're in a very highly emotional state with the airport. I don't think we can create any more data, analyze any more data, to create a bigger baseball bat of data to try this, to create a different social behavior, of social consciousness of Mile High. So my point here is to, let's all strive as leaders of this community, leaders of the Airport Board, leaders in the council, to practice more emotional intelligence. Daniel Goldman has written many great books on emotional intelligence. I think it's a great thing to strive for and see if we can begin to change the conversation, find a way to coexist with the airport. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Norris?
And you definitely don't want me to sing. Mayor and councilmembers, I am Bob Norris. I live at 532 Rider Ridge Drive, much to the chagrin of some of my neighbors, but that's another issue. I'm a member of the Latino Chamber of Boulder County. I've been for several years. I have my own business called Norris Environmental Consulting, which I don't do a whole lot of work anymore, but I've enjoyed being a member of that organization. I've watched it grow. I've been here for 14, 15 years, and I've been impressed with the number of minority businesses that have been grown in a community. And I think this is good for the community. A lot of these are small businesses. They need the help in reading the agreement. Supporting the issue in item number F, which will support the Latino Chamber and make a stronger relationship between the Chamber and the city, will enable the Chamber to provide more help to these small businesses, which I think will help solve and will raise more sales tax, and it'll also provide employment for many people. So I thank you considering that. Thank you.
Thank you. Strider Dunston?
Greetings, Mayor Combs, City Council. I'm Strider Dunston, 951 Seventeenth Avenue. I am stunned by this proclamation. I sort of learned that I should be here tonight, last night, and then I didn't know it was actually occurring until the moment it happened. So that is, I appreciate that. A deliberative body with open consultant consultation with the public. That's what's going on right now. Tragically, our national rhetorical stage has been taken over by ideology and corruption and the multi-billion-dollar lobbying industry. So we're getting back down to the fundamentals of how do we create or maintain or function democratically? And maybe like back in the 17th century, we've got to learn how to do it at home. And this is an example, a very contentious issue with probably very honest people on both sides. Many of these things. Ms. Alkins spoke tonight. I normally don't agree with her, but what she was talking about tonight is very crucial. And I recall the discussion in the last week or two that there was concern and consideration for having a several-tiered layer in terms of fixed income. People can get a break on this. I hope that continues to be in the process. The purpose of a government and the purpose of democracy is collaborative deliberation to try to achieve what is the best for the whole without excluding the rights and the necessities of any individual. Sometimes that comes in conflict, and that's why we have a deliberative body. Most of the time, the last several years, I think you guys do a good job of working at that and sometimes succeeding. And let's keep it going and remember the whole community because we're all members of it. Thank you much.
Thank you, Strider. Well, that ends, first call publicly invited to be heard.
Mayor Combs, your next item on the agenda is Ordinance 2015-15, a bill for an ordinance making additional appropriations for the expenses and liabilities of the city of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2015. We do not have a formal staff presentation on this, but staff is in the audience.
Is there any questions from council before we open the public hearing? Okay, I will now open the public hearing on Ordinance 2015-15. Is there anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this ordinance? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I move Ordinance 2015-15.
Okay, it's been moved to second. Let's vote. That passes 7 to 0.
Your next item is Ordinance 2015-16, a bill for an ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to lease the property, the real property known as Vance brand Municipal Airport Hangar Parcel H5 to James Daniel McKinstry. Again, we do not have a formal staff presentation on this, but staff is in the audience to address questions.
Okay, any questions from council before we open the public hearing? Okay, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anybody from the public who'd like to speak on Ordinance 2015-16? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Finlay?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I would move passage of Ordinance 2015-16.
Okay, it's been moved to second. Let's vote. Okay, that passes 7 to 0.
Your next item of business is approval of final funding for 2015 Community Development Block Grant Program, Home Program, and Affordable Housing Funding, and public hearing for citizen input regarding proposed funding. Kathy Fedler will make this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kathy Fedler, Housing and Community Investment Coordinator. And I apologize in advance, this item may take longer than what I normally do for this annually because we have had some last-minute changes and updates and stuff on the funding scenario. So I put before you a new and revised updated 2015 allocation, which is different from what I sent out last night, so I apologize again, but figures are continuing to change. So we're here tonight to do, take formal final action on the city of Longmont's proposed 2015 CDBG Home and Affordable Housing Fund project recommendations. We did hold a, actually a 45-day public comment period, which completed in January 30 of 2015. So then this is the public hearing to do the final comments. If you remember, we did applications in the summer. The Housing and Human Services Advisory Board and the Technical Review Group both reviewed the applications, made recommendations to you back in October, subject to the comment period, and then again, bringing this back for final approval. So I don't know if it's easier to go through what has changed or not, but a lot of the changes are due to the fact that we did, after this went to your agenda packet, received what is going to be our final allocations for CDBG and home funds for 2015. And then we did have one correction to our reconcil, end-of-the-year reconciliation in the home program. So that's what has changed everything. So on the, well, let me get to what has changed. Okay. So what actually changed were the actual amounts for CDBG and home, the updated carryover in home. So those made changes to the general rehab item or program, which changed from like $90,000 to now it's $45,000, $48,000. This is sufficient funding for this program at this point in time, but there is a note in number three on the revised submittal that if one of the projects, the microloan guarantee program, doesn't go forward, we would reallocate those funds and that we would use those funds for the Suites land acquisition or the general rehab program if they're not needed for the microloan program, and I'll go into the microloan program here in a little bit. But if we only get $48,000 for the general rehab program, that is sufficient because we do have some funds that we currently have available from previous year. The main changes are to the Suites funding. That program, we are, our project, we're now acquiring land instead of directly participating in the rehab of the actual Suites units. Because there were home funds in those units when they were originally purchased several years ago, we can't add home funds to that. So if we help the LHDC, the Longmont Housing Development Corporation, acquire the vacant land when they subdivide the Suites property and use home funds for that, then LHDC, the sale proceeds from the LHA, from LHDC to the LHA can be used for the rehab. So it is all legitimate. It's all, it's just kind of a workaround. And eventually, the LHDC is the one that's going to be developing the vacant parcel anyway. So it does get the funds into the rehab as well as get the land out from underneath the existing property. There is also, we learned just in the past week, there's a possible gap of about $185,000 above what we had originally thought. So I did go back and reallocate funds in that $185,000 if it's needed. When we get further into the project, if it's not needed, we won't use the affordable housing funds for that. We'll put those funds back into the fund. Or we could replace it with a microloan if that doesn't go forward. But as of right now, I just put that in in case there is that gap. And then the other change that happened is that I adjusted the administration, the home and the CDBG admin funds to reflect the actual applicable percentages that you can take from the actual grant amounts. On the microloan guarantee program, what is happening with that is that we are waiting for information from HUD on how to structure a program. They apparently haven't done this for a while or ever. I don't, I'm not sure. So they are trying to get guidance from DC. We haven't received that yet. At your next meeting, March 17, we're actually going, I was hoping to have it for this meeting, but it didn't happen, we're actually going to bring forward the microloan program for approval and actually allocating a smaller amount of affordable housing funds in the interim so that program can move forward when we start making loans. Then as soon as we figure out the CDBG portion of it, we can reimburse the affordable housing fund. Or if we can't figure it out, we'll just use the affordable housing fund. So that would be coming to you March 17. So there's a lot of moving pieces here, unfortunately, this year. So I do apologize for that. The other thing that I do need to go through as part of the requirements of the, this required public hearing, is to talk a little bit about the past year performance. You're going to get a more formal report in March on our Consolidated Annual Performance Report, or CAPR. But just real briefly, we have spent about $1,025,000. This is also adjusted a little bit because I just approved a draw today. So about a million some dollars of CDBG and home funds in 2014. We spent down and got rid of, closed out prior year's grant with only one project still hanging from 2012 and two projects that were funded in 2013 that are remaining open. Both of those should close really actually early in 2015. One of them is Small Business Lending Program, and the other is related to the Lanyon and Spangler Park neighborhood projects, both of which should wrap up early this year. We had over 153 persons attended the homeownership training programs and 12 completed one-on-one budget sessions for home purchase. 10 households received mortgage delinquency or foreclosure prevention. 66 total families received assistance to rehabilitate their homes, not including DR assistance. So not including any disaster recovery. That's just our assistance, so not including any disaster recovery, that's just our ongoing regular programs. Five were general rehab, 16 were accessibility projects, and 23 were emergency grants. And then we started a new mobile home repair program because there was quite significant, once we did get into the disaster, finding quite significant other mobile home repair needs, not flood-impacted, but just general substandard housing conditions. So we designed a mini $5,000 max program for the mobile home folks that aren't eligible for disaster assistance. We rehabbed 32 senior units at the St. Frey Manor. Again, that's where we're replacing tubs with showers, walk-in showers, so that folks can age in place. Six families completed the match savings program, or the IDA program, and purchased a home, five purchased a home this year, and one used their funds to further their education. And then again, the two neighborhood projects are going on. And finally, under CDBG funds, 52 families with school-aged children received free wireless internet accounts through the Digital Divide program, and 10 families received computers so they could access the internet. And again, as a reminder, that program is going to be administered by Children and Youth Services from now on, starting actually this year. We'll probably continue to fund it as needed, but they're going to be actually the ones administering it. In home funds, we completed two down payment assistance homes, our loans, both purchased in Longmont. We completed the tenant-based rental assistance program with three households assisted, and then completed rehabilitation on the 17 new transitional housing units at the in-between. Affordable housing funds were used to acquire land for the eventual construction of six townhomes by Habitat at Poplar Grove, and then they also completed the construction and sale of three additional townhomes in Poplar Grove using 25,000 in fee waivers. So that was kind of quick, so I'd be happy to take, answer any questions that you might have, otherwise you can have the public hearing or however you want to do that.
Councilmember Levinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Kathy, can you explain to me what's happening with that piece of property that the city acquired and demolished, the home, is it the Marshall Place, and what LHA, Longmont Housing Authority, plans to do with that land acquisition that they're paying us the $40,000 for the lot?
So Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Levinson, so that program, they're actually going to, the LHA is going to acquire it from the city, so that recoups at least, I think, the most of the funds that we have spent on it, I don't think it's 100%, but they will acquire it and they're going to hold it for a couple of years until Habitat is ready to build on it, and then they will sell it to Habitat for the same amount. So there won't be any gain to the Housing Authority other than for their ongoing maintenance costs while they're sitting on it. But Habitat's just not ready to move on it immediately, so they couldn't, didn't feel they could go in and acquire it and sit on it and hold it, so the LHA agreed to do that on their behalf.
Thank you for that.
Okay, I don't see any other questions, so I'm going to open up the public hearing. I think Terry Benjamin has signed up, is here.
She's a magician at this stuff. I don't know, man. She's amazing between the acronyms and the line items, I don't know how she does it. Lucky to have her here. My name's Terry Benjamin, I live at 621 Gay Street. And just in terms of supporting Kathy's work and her plan, I just think it's just phenomenal work, and it's a little bit of money that goes a long way due to her dedication. I do think in terms of some of the priorities that are there, I think in her plan, it talks about really targeting housing dollars to the low-income folks in our community, 50% AMI and below. And I just really encourage that not only this effort, but all housing efforts, really look at those folks that are struggling the most to keep a roof over their head, and it's a growing number. And in that kind of light, or maybe I should have been up at the public and then be invited to be heard early on, it's really the top plan that's bringing in the housing element that I'm really interested in. That's the long game for us, right? I mean, I came to the meeting a couple weeks ago and you kicked it off, and it's like a 20-year view of what we're thinking about for this town. And there is absolutely no way, when we're thinking about the future of this town, that we can't increase, can't, did I say that right? We have to increase the focus on housing and affordable housing for people. The economic, demographic, political changes that are going on in our country, HUD, I think Councilman Levinson went to a meeting, and I heard you say at a council meeting that HUD may be out of business in a few years. These needs are going to come here and going to be dealt with here more and more and more in the future. So my encouragement is to think more about this incredibly complex and difficult and expensive issue, just as you do sewers and roads and things like that. It has to become part of our infrastructure planning. Some communities are starting to do what they call impact planning, looking at their developments, like the mall that's been a little controversial lately. What is that going to mean for our housing stock? What are the wages going to be for people who work there? It's going to be tough, because a lot of the retail jobs, as great as they are, generating income for us, they don't generate the wages to support a family. So things like that are going to have to be factored in to our planning to really take a comprehensive, full look at what's going on in our community in about 10 or 20 years. I think my hope is really at the end of that process, that kind of planning is incorporated in there. It's not only necessarily housing, the impact on the nonprofits. It's absolutely burying nonprofits to see people come in. Tonight, there was a woman who $7, it makes a break for her. There was a fellow at the last meeting, stood up, you talked to him a little bit, struggling mightily to make a go of it and cannot do it. And that's wrong. And so lastly, I think what I would ask is that you guys, in some ways, I guess as I perceive your role, it's really kind of a collective conscience for the community. And so as you kind of work through this planning process and these incredibly big decisions you're going to be making, have those voices on your shoulders. Maybe one of those folks, just have those faces and voices on your shoulders as you think about the decisions that you make and who they impact in the future. Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak at the public hearing on this item? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would move that we accept this report.
Second.
Okay, let's vote. Now we have a body yet.
There you go. You had it. It's not leaking. It was. You haven't voted yet. Okay.
Okay, that passes seven to zero. So one of, some of us been here since 5:30 taking.
Mayor, can I say something real quick? I wanted to talk briefly about the work that Kathy's actually been doing on the traditional CDBG, but also the CDBG DR, and the work that we're doing on flood recovery. Kathy has really taken a leadership role in terms of the work with all of the communities in Boulder County, and how we look at the unmet needs. And so while we see this great work on this piece, she's also doing it and doing yeoman's work on the other side, too. And so I just wanted to let you all know that what she's doing on a regular basis, not only related to this, but also on the DR side, and tremendous value that she's bringing to our community in assisting residents. And so I wanted to pass that on to you and give a big thank you to Kathy. She's been really instrumental in this process. And in that note, if there's any questions on the DR piece, we can answer those as it's related to CDBG.
I certainly appreciate, you know, your hard work, even before the flood. I mean, you're the heart and soul and the conscience of this community, along with several other people, but, including Karen, but yeah, I can't say enough about how much we appreciate, you know, your leadership in this effort. Thank you. So let's take a five-minute break.
No stand-in, Mayor. No stand-in.
Yeah, I already gave this. Those same things you've got these scenes I know coming.
Hey.
You notice when I see myself on TV walking up?
Both of them.
Yeah, and I'm going bald big time.
So, you see.
Big time.
Just shave it. Alright, let's continue on the.
Are you ready for the consent, Mayor Coombs? Are you ready for the consent items?
Yes.
First item on consent is ordinance 2015-17, a bill for an ordinance amending chapters 15.05 and 15.10 and cross-references of the Longmont Municipal Code regarding development review procedures. Public hearing and second reading is scheduled for March 17th. Item 9B is Resolution 2015-10, approving the agreement between the city and Malcolm and Sarah Morrison for an outside sewer tap at 9356 Rogers Road. Item 9C is Resolution 2015-11, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Longmont Housing Authority for the 2015 Road to Independence Security and Empowerment Program. Item 9D is Resolution 2015-12, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Boulder County for its Energy Services Outreach Program. Item 9E is approve and authorize the mayor to sign a special council contract with Hayes, Phillips, Hoffman, Parker, Wilson, and Carberry PC for real property issues including eminent domain and quiet title actions. Item 9F is approve and authorize the mayor to sign an economic development agreement with the Latino Chamber of Commerce of Boulder County related to minority outreach related to economic development. Item 9G is approve changes to council's rules of procedure. Item 9H is approve three capital improvement program amendments. And item 9I is legislative positions supporting House Bill 1115-1217 concerning local government input on tasting rooms, applications, support for Senate Bill 15177 concerning construction defect lawsuit timeliness, opposition to House Bill 151197 concerning indemnity in public construction, and opposition to Senate Bill 15172 concerning high performance transportation accountability. And staff would like to pull items A and F for further discussion.
Are they pulling not I also?
Um, not unless you want it pulled.
Okay. Yeah. Trust me, Kristenson.
Are we pulling I?
Yeah, I guess I'd like to pull it.
Yes, I would too.
Okay. Trust me, Bradley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, but if we don't pull it, everything that's on there, staff suggesting opposed versus we suggest to support or oppose, we just go through and that's our direction, right? So, if we don't pull it, then it's going to go through as written. So, my, I guess what I'm saying is that.
I guess I don't need to put it in, so I'm happy with this.
Okay, alright.
Okay.
Alright, sweet.
Trust me, family.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would move approval of the consent agenda minus A, F, and I.
Second. Okay, let's vote. Okay, pass the seven to zero.
Mayor Coombs, the first item pulled is the development code updates, and Don Burchett will introduce this item.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs. Members of council, Don Burchett, the City of Longmont, Planning and Development Services Department. And I'm here tonight to talk to you about the amendments to chapter 1502. I think everybody has had some discussion with somebody about this. I know I have had quite a few on the phone and in person to try and help people understand the ramifications of the proposal as it currently stands. And I'm hoping tonight that we can go through and try to give the council and those people watching at home and in the audience a good understanding of what's on the table for amendment in that chapter. So, we appreciate you giving us the opportunity to do that. So, if I can figure out how to change the slide here. Sorry, technical difficulties here. Is there a clicker up here? I'm sorry. Or is it sandy? Thank you. So, the first thing I'd like to do is, one, give just a general overview of what chapter 1502 is, and then we'll get into some of the items specifically and then get into question and answer. So, for those of people that don't understand or know all the ins and outs of the land development code of the, or the City of Longmont Municipal Code. The Longmont Land Development Code was adopted by ordinance and is Title 15 in the Longmont Municipal Code. The Land Development Code is broken into a number of chapters and helps us in the planning department help people who are interested in doing development, whether that be a brand-new subdivision or trying to get a variance to do an addition to their house through the process that the city has adopted. Chapter 1502 is one of those chapters in the Land Development Code. Chapter 1502 is one of the largest chapters in the Land Development Code, and it specifies a number of things, but in general, what it specifies is the process that someone has to go through in order to do development in the City of Longmont. And again, that applies not only for a developer, like the people who develop the mall, but also, again, for small homeowners who would like to do things to their home or to their businesses as well. The other thing that the chapter talks about are the impacts, or is that it impacts the development process. In other words, this chapter tells us how and what we need to do from a process standpoint when you have an idea, like a concept for development, and it also goes all the way through of giving you occupancy so you can actually go and occupy your home or your business once you're done through our development process. So, this chapter, again, chapter 1502, is very broad and very extensive in the topics that it covers. To give a little bit of background on how we came to today, back in 2012, at City Council Retreat, there was an item back in 2012 about cutting red tape. During that City Council Retreat, there were a number of topics that were discussed, and some of the things that we took away as a department, we're trying to figure out if there are ways that we could try and improve our process, things that would help people understand the process and also make sure that we weren't going through and doing some things that maybe would add additional time if it wasn't necessary, and also trying to make it so that it was understandable for people to be able to follow our process, because that's one of the things we hear, is how do we become involved in the process? How can we affect change? These things are things that are all good and are things that we should be trying to make sure that we have public participation like we had tonight when we're going through the development process. So, in that next year, staff went through and identified a number of sections in the Land Development Code, and we brought a number of those up to you over the past two, three years for changes to the Development Code. But because of the complexity of 1502, the process, in order for us to get started, we actually started in 2013. And after about 13 months of working on that through staff review and also going out and getting some reviews done by people who have used the Land Development Code through our system to get feedback on that, we then generated a draft, and we went to the City of Longmont Planning and Zoning Commission in March of 2014 and presented our rough draft to them. This was a study session, a work session, where we could talk about topics, find out about their concerns, get their feedback, and then come back to them with a kind of a final draft. In April 2014, we took the input back from the Planning and Zoning Commission, and we came up with what was a draft at that time, and we went through with them and presented that at a public hearing. We had ability for people to come and speak at a public hearing on this item, on the agenda, and we went through that process. The Planning and Zoning Commission at that time recommended approval of that draft as it was at that time, with a condition that they were hopeful that City Council would see value in adding notification to renters or property. Under the current Land Development Code, the way it's currently written, if you are a renter in a business or a renter in a house, you do not receive any notice from us when a development application is being built right next door to you. Their concern was that they have seen at a number of their public hearings where they have had people show up and say, "We have never received notice of this application. We didn't get anything in the mail. My neighbor got it, but I didn't. You know, if I wouldn't have seen the sign that was posted, or if they wouldn't have told me, I wouldn't have known about that." So, the Planning Commission felt that allowing city staff to notify renters of property when we are proposing or reviewing a development application that's in an area where we know there's a lot of renters or people that are in a building that don't own it, that we have that ability. They discussed whether or not we should include this as a requirement carte blanche for all applications, and they felt that that wasn't necessarily needed. But they did feel that it was needed when we were looking at areas, for example, where there were a lot of businesses, or where we knew that there were a lot of apartments and rental housing in the area that we otherwise would not get responses from those neighbors who would be impacted. So, that was their recommendation. So, from May to July, staff made changes then to the draft that we had, and we started getting that ready to bring it up to City Council. We incorporated the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommended change, and then in August, we scheduled a meeting before the City Council. That meeting went long. It was one of the few meetings you guys have that went long, but it did go long, and I was waiting, and finally, when you took a break, you told me, "Don, we're not going to get to this item tonight. We want to bump it." So, we bumped it out to September, and I came back in September, and we went through and talked about the draft code. And at that time, there were some questions that I had in specific areas that we wanted to get your feedback on, and you gave us some direction on some of these topics of what the council at that time wanted us to move forward with in going towards an ordinance. The next thing that we did then was that we came back in October, or I'm sorry, from October to November, we went and we prepared then what would be the final ordinance to get to first reading. So, during the review, after us crazy planners had gone and made our changes and gotten everything written up, we sent it over to legal to get their review, and they had to also go through and proof it for making sure that the references, the cross-references were right and things like that. And because of that, there were a number of changes that came back on the red line that was presented to council. So, in December 2nd, we came back for a first reading with that ordinance. We had a description of all the changes, and council had concerns. Council was a little upset that every page in that document had some identification of a revision. Now, many of those, if not most of those, were related to the legal review of cross-references, changing, making sure that it read correctly, but there were changes that we did make based on the feedback that we had gotten. So, there were changes, and so at that meeting, council voted to ask us to bring it back and go over those changes with you. So, in January 6th, we came back again, and we went through the ordinance with you. We tried to explain the areas that were significant from the change standpoint that had an impact, whether that be of a planning change or a legal change, but we walked you through those. And then, in January, or and then during that meeting, council voted to give us some direction on some additional revisions to that ordinance at that time. So, we left that meeting and proceeded to go down that road of creating the ordinance that you have tonight. Between the January 6th and the February 24th meeting that we're at tonight, council held open forum. And again, you had a public participation, you had a good turnout, you had some people who spoke with concerns about the changes to the Land Development Code that were proposed. My understanding from that meeting, because I wasn't here, was that the takeaway of that was that there was a potential that there may be some amendments to the ordinance that the council would like to consider based on that feedback that was presented by the citizens at that meeting. The City Attorney's Office has sent out three amendments for you that were, some were included in your packet, one I think you actually received today and was at your desk, but those are here tonight for you to consider if you would like, and I'll get into those in just a minute. So, what were the goals when we first started the Land Development Code update? The first was to remove the redundancies. We had sections where you would have the same topic being discussed in multiple chapters, which if you didn't know to look in another chapter or weren't familiar enough with it, you may not understand that there was nuances between a certain type of application that weren't clear in the first section and were found in another section. We wanted to improve the readability of the code. Unless you're an attorney or you're someone who's studied this and deals with it daily, it can be very confusing, and even for us that deal with it daily, reading it today, there can be confusion on how certain areas are interpreted, so we are trying to correct those things. We're also, again, consolidating regulations into one place. You shouldn't have to hunt through a document that's over 300 pages to find the, all the sections pertaining to whatever you're trying to do. They should all be in one spot. The other thing that we looked at is that we wanted to create a document that was easier for everyone to understand and use. So, in the paper this weekend, it said legalese. Yes. When you read some of these sections, you will see that when the attorneys that wrote this for us that we had hired, there are some sections that are hard to understand if you don't understand the legal wording that is put in there. We are trying to clean it up so that the common person, the people who should understand what's going on, can read this and have a better understanding of that. And that's, that, those were our goals when we started down this process. So, what's proposed to change? Again, section, or chapter 15 is within the Land Development Code, and it's broken down by sections, so each section that I'm going to go through is in chapter 1502, and I'll try to be brief so that we don't continue down too far and make sure you have enough time to ask questions. But the first section is 1502-010, and it has to do with review bodies in the City of Longmont. That means yourself, your body, and what you review from an application standpoint, Planning and Zoning Commission, your Board of Adjustment, and also your city staff. We are not proposing to make any changes to any of the review bodies or to any of the projects that they review. If council currently looks at a project, you will continue to see those kind of projects come back to you. If Planning Commission reviews those projects, Planning Commission will continue to see those. We are not proposing to make any changes to who reviews what or who has the decision-making in any of our review processes. Under 1502-020, general provisions, these are the items that are proposed to change. The first is to set the public notice requirements for all major developments except for vacations. And not my vacation to somewhere nice, but a vacation to get rid of a road or ease in it, we are proposing that all of those go to 750. Currently, in our code, they all start at 750 unless they get to be a big development, and then depending on how large it is, it can go out to 1,000 feet of notice. There is an ability for our staff to make a mistake when a project comes in for a pre-application conference and the developer's original vision for a project is a little bit smaller. Then through the process, they look at it and they figure out that they could make it a little bit bigger than what they presented to us. We've already told them what steps they need to take and what their notice area needs to be. If they move forward with that, and we don't find out until after they've made application that their building went and went one square foot over that maximum amount, they get to start over again, and that's assuming that we catch it. Whether this goes to 1,000 feet, larger, smaller, staff, we really don't have a preference. We would just like consistency. Make it easy for us, make it easy for the people who are doing this to make sure that we don't have an error, that we don't end up in a lawsuit with someone arguing about whether or not we did something correctly. Make it, help us make this something that we can follow. Second item is what we talked about just a few minutes ago, Planning and Zoning Commission. Allow the direct, planning directors to notify renters of property within an area based on the impacts of the development and whether or not there's a large amount of renters in the area. Give us that ability. We think that's a good thing that would help encourage public participation and make sure that we have a good process going forward. The next item that we're proposing is we're required, we're proposing to require posted notice on properties that will hold a neighborhood meeting. So, this is a change from right now. Right now, if you have a neighborhood meeting, there is no sign that goes up on a property to give you a heads up that there's a to give you a heads up that there's a neighborhood meeting. If you didn't get the notice, you didn't hear from it from your neighbor, you won't know. So this again is another good way to provide public input by letting people know who may be driving by and may not live in that area. And just another item to clarify, I'm sorry, the variances are a major development application. Those are currently 300 feet, those would stay at 300 feet. Vacations are at 150 feet, they would stay currently at 150 feet. So those, those are as they are today, are not proposing to be changed. But again, if council would like us to expand those, we're happy to do that. The next item that we're looking at is 1502-020, the general provisions related to the appeal process. This is one that a lot of people have questions on. The first thing that we're proposing is to actually have in our code the specific process for the appeal hearing. Right now, there is no specific outline for how the appeal hearing is supposed to be conducted by City Council or by Planning and Zoning Commission. We give you a cheat sheet. We ask you to please follow that because we think that gives a fair and equitable hearing for all parties involved. We are proposing to include that into the land development code. Again, we feel that this is a good revision that again lets people know what the rules are so that they can follow them and participate. The item that has been proposed to be changed, and this came from a council redirection a little bit here, but there is a redefine right now of a role of who can appeal. And I have a slide that I'm going to show you the changes so that people can see that of the differences of what the code currently says of who can appeal and what this ordinance says would, of who would be allowed to appeal. So I'll get to that in just a minute. And the last item that is currently in there is to require the city attorney to review all appeals for conformance to the appeal criteria. So let me first just explain how our current criteria or our appeal process works. If a development is proposed in the city of Longmont that goes through Planning and Zoning Commission, and they are the final decider on that application, the appeal notice is read after that public hearing, and if I do not like the way that the decision was made, I can appeal based on why I believe the decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission was in error. I write a letter that basically states that I'm appealing it, why I'm appealing it, and I have seven days to turn that in to the city clerk's office and into the Planning and Development Services offices. From there, we notify the applicant that their project has been appealed. We schedule meetings with both the applicant and the appellant. We talk to them about the appeal process. We tell them what we think the appeal procedure is going to look like before council, and then we answer their questions. If their appeal, whether or not it is considered to be valid from a standpoint of someone's, someone doesn't like the color of the building versus we didn't get adequate notice, it doesn't matter what the extent of the request is, we go and we process the appeal up to City Council. What the proposal right now would do is that the city attorney's office would review the request for an appeal and determine whether or not the appeal meets the criteria that states why did the Planning Commission make an error in the decision, or what was done that is wrong that needs to be corrected and fixed by the City Council. The city attorney reviews it and doesn't believe that they have met that requirement. The city attorney has seven days to respond back to them and let them know what their error was. In other words, the color of the building is not a review criteria, it's not a standard in our code. Please expand on why the Planning Commission made an error in their decision. They then get another seven days to rewrite their request, to become more specific, to look at what was written and try to understand why wasn't this appeal going to be determined to be valid at the beginning. So it gives somebody a second chance to try to make sure that their appeal is actually written well and that it addresses the issue at hand and that it's something that actually is something the council can look at and make a decision on based on the rules and procedures that you have in place through the land development code. Now, this does put the city attorney in kind of a position. You know, he, whether, whatever decision he makes, you know, it could be looked at as either a political issue or as a, as a decision that he's made an error. So I, I could, I'm kind of surprised that Eugene actually agreed to even consider this, but the, this is the way that it is currently in our code. And that's the difference is that you would have two chances to try to write your request to address the appeal, and I think that is important. Now, what are the revisions to the appeal? So for a major development application, a major development application is an item that, that I'm talking about right now are those that are going to go to Planning Commission. They're the decision maker. There are other major development applications that come to City Council. Anything that comes to City Council, annexation, land use amendment, rezoning, the only appeal that is available to anyone is to go to court. There is no, we want council to reconsider it again. It goes to court. The best example is the Butterball, right? We've held a hearing, we went through, we even redid it again based on some, some things we thought we needed to do, but their recourse was to go to court and to sue us, okay? Under major development applications that are decided by Planning and Zoning Commission, the recourse first is to come to City Council. So this is where a lot of people that have contacted me have had some questions and concerns. How, how does this affect me of appealing a project that I think is wrong? So on the screen that we have up there is we have existing and proposed. So the items that are proposed to be removed, the people that would be removed from standing to be able to appeal a major development application would be persons who testify at the hearing, persons who submitted written comments, any resident of the city of Longmont, and City Council. So those are the four that would be removed from being able to, to appeal. Now, the only thing that I would point out is that the way that the code is written and under the proposed section is that it also states, the third item, bulleted item says, "Any person or organization entitled to written notice of the public hearing." In the development code, it says that if Dan lives outside of the notice area and that he wants to be noticed of all of the development applications that we're reviewing on a project that is a mile away from his house or further, doesn't matter, all he has to do is contact me and ask to be put on the list for written notice. Now, he has to take that initiative. But by him asking to be put on that notice list, he is now in this category of being a person who can appeal. It does take an extra step. It does. I'm not going to sit here and tell you differently. And it is different than what we currently have. That's one of the things that I have heard the most from the citizens on is that they would like to have the ability to appeal it whether or not they received written notice, whether or not they came in and asked us to send them the written notice. So that, that's just a, an example of what I have heard from the citizens. Minor development applications. Again, these are applications that are approved from a staff level. So the existing is that states that the only person that can appeal a staff-level decision right now is the applicant. We're proposing not only that the applicant could appeal, but the owner of the property because they may not be the same person. And we're also proposing that city manager has the ability to appeal a decision that staff makes. So those are two additional people that would have eligibility to appeal a decision that's made by staff. The final item of the proposed revisions is for administrative appeals. So currently, these are, again, going to be things that are along the lines of temporary use permits, decisions related to some of our standards that we have. So right now, the applicant, the owner of the property, and any person with standing to appeal under Colorado law is the way that the code is, code section is written. And the way that it's proposed is that it's the applicant, the owner of the property, and the city manager would have that ability to appeal a decision that was made. 1502-030, these are our core review procedures. The first thing that we would be doing is adding a new section on administrative permits. Administrative permits, again, are going to be those things like temporary uses, minor modifications, which are kind of a staff-level variance that we're allowed to do up to 20% by code, and then exceptions again to the design standards and construction specifications that are found in the public work standards that they have to follow for development. The other change is that we would allow for some of the smaller projects to be approved administratively over the counter. Some of the examples that I've used previously is that for someone to do a sales and model home in their new residential development, if they're building a new subdivision, right now, the code would require that we do go through a larger development review process instead of looking at a standard permit that we have that says, "These are the rules for you to operate on per our code. You have to meet these or it will be revoked," and giving that to them. So we're trying to, again, clean up some of these items that when it goes through development review process, we don't get feedback from the other departments. It's standard comments, it's things that are, that we perceive as very minor administrative The next item in 1504, review standards, is that all the review criteria have been updated. When you would look at development applications, when we would give you packets for annexations or rezonings or land use amendments, you would see that there were many of the same review criteria repeated in every one of those applications that they had to address. What we have tried to do is come up with a set of standards that apply to all development, and then specifics that apply to certain types of development. We've also tried to write them so that people can understand what they mean. You know, what does it mean to be in conformance with the LACP as amended and, and on and on and on? You know, well, why don't we talk about how does this match with what the comprehensive plan has for the city? Why don't we talk about, you know, is it compatible with the neighborhood versus trying to say some of these things that would just go on for three, four, or five sentences? So let's make it so people can understand it, as well as the boards and commissions who have to review these. The other thing that was included, which I've included this even though council's already really adopted this through a separate process, we, we did add in the, the changes to the legislative text amendments. So this was getting into the, if we're going to make an amendment to the comprehensive plan, if we're going to do a rezoning, if we're going to make changes to the land development code, are these things that affect the whole city? Or are these things that are on the edge of only affecting a select few people that should be notified of these changes? And so we talk about the size requirement, the number of property owners that are affected, and if they're below a certain number of people or a certain square mile of area, that we're going to give out extra notice to people to make sure that they are aware that changes the city council is considering affect their property. 1504, again, the other additional notice is proposed if changes affect, oh, this is what I just talked about, I'm sorry. So these are the, the parameters. Again, if it's less than 100 property owners are affected, they get special notice. If it's less than 640 acres a square mile, the property owners get noticed. Again, this is making sure that they're aware of proposals that could affect their property rights on their property. Another thing that we talked about during our study session that's being proposed is that right now, mobile home parks and mobile home subdivisions are currently treated differently than any other type of development in the city of Longmont. They have to go through a four-step process if they would like to propose a mobile home park or mobile home subdivision, different than any other development we have. We are proposing that on a mobile home park, it be treated as a conditional use review and that it go through a public hearing process through the Planning and Zoning Commission, one public hearing, not two, the way it's currently set up. For mobile home subdivisions, again, we're proposing that it would be treated as a regular residential subdivision. It'll go through the preliminary plat review, which again is a public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission, is appealable to the City Council, but only has to go through a final plat. They don't have to go through two public hearings in order to get their preliminary plat approved and then come back again for their final plat. No other development has to go through a final plat approval through a public hearing process. The last item that we changed, I hope, because I know everybody's tired here, is height exceptions. We currently, under height exceptions, if someone wants to get a height exception, they have to meet the variance criteria. Discussions on that have been varied, but what we have found is that the variance criteria, and when you're trying to actually look at a height exception and determine whether or not there's extenuating circumstances, or there's a reason or a benefit to the community for granting a height exception, that's not included in the current review criteria. So we created our own new review criteria for height exceptions that we feel gives the decision makers an opportunity to actually look at something that could be in the public interest and say, "We're going to approve this because it makes sense," which also would allow staff to support it versus some of our other requests currently we, we haven't supported because they, the, the current criteria are just so unique to a variance, it's hard to meet. Now I'm into section 050. These are the review standards for minor development applications. Again, we updated the review criteria for these so that they're easier to understand. 060, this is the new section that we added where we spelled out those administrative functions that we have so that they're clear, that people know the process when you want to get a temporary use permit, when you want to get a model, sales, trailer, things like that. 070, development agreements invested property rights. We did not make any changes other than to combine them into one section. They, they really kind of go hand in hand together, so they are put into one section. 080, written code interpretations. We did some minor edits on this, trying to make sure that it was clear. This is typically happens when someone does not like an interpretation of the code by city staff. They can ask the planning director for a written code interpretation that then can be appealed up to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a public hearing to see if the Planning and Zoning Commission believes that the decision was correct. But it's not changing the process or the appealability on that. 090, public and common private improvement review and construction acceptance, there's no changes proposed to that section at all. Section 100, we are proposing to remove the grading permits that are listed in this section. Council adopted a storm water permitting process a few years ago. It was supposed to replace the grading permit. This was a remnant, it just needs to be removed, so we're proposing to remove it. Section 110, benefi, excuse me, beneficial use and takings determination, there are no proposed changes to that section. And then 120 is environmental site assessment requirements, and again, there are no changes proposed. So tonight, council has a number of options with this being on first reading. First thing that you can do is you could make the decision that the ordinance as it's written is acceptable, and you could move to approve that. The second choice that you have tonight is that you could propose to modify the ordinance. That would go along the lines of what I was mentioning with the discussion from the open forum. We have included some motions based on what we believe we heard feedback on three of the sections. Those sections were about who can appeal. The second is on the notice distance of whether or not you'd like to increase any of those up to a greater distance. And then the third item was whether or not the city attorney should review the appeals before they come before the city council. The last that you could do is you could decide that the current land development code, the way it's written, is the way that it should be, and if that's the council's pleasure, then we, we can do that too. So we're, we're, we're okay however the council would like to go forward on this. With me tonight, I do have the, I'm sorry, I almost gave you a promotion. The assistant city attorney, Dan Kramer, is here to answer some of the legal questions that you may have. And I've spoken way too long, so I'm going to stop here and see if you have some questions.
Well, I have a question. You know, if we increase the distance from 750 feet to 1,000 feet, doesn't sound like much, but in terms of area, it's almost, you know, a doubling factor. It's, you know, it's an 80% increase in the number of notices. What does it cost to notice an area of like 1,000 feet, a few, versus 750 feet? I mean, is it a small fee, or is it astronomical? I mean, just ballpark.
So, Mayor Coombs, council. The Boulder County charges a fee for the developer to get it. I believe that that is $35, the last time that we checked the cost of that last year. And I don't believe that has gone up. The cost of postage for something like that with, depending on the area. If you're in, say, Old Town, and you're going to end up with 300 to 400 people that are going to get notices on a notice like that, you know, you could be up $50 to $75 probably for postage on something like that. Is that a lot? I mean, it adds up over time. But the developers, the applicants, property owners, if it's a variance, are the ones who are going to pay those fees. The city does not cover those postage fees.
You know, when I read the 1502.02 proposed revisions, it sounds like you are increasing transparency, not decreasing it. I mean, it sounds like an improvement to me. Am I missing something there? I mean, because you're now notifying renters of property. And, I mean, to me, it sounds like, when I read that, that that's an increase in transparency to noticing people, not a decrease.
Mayor Coombs, members of council. Again, from discussions with Planning and Zoning Commission to the discussions that I have had with some of you on this council, as well as those residents that have contacted me, the Planning Department would much rather have the input through the development review process and know what the issues are before we get to a public hearing, because that gives us an opportunity to try to address the concerns. That gives the applicant the ability to try to address the concerns before they've spent thousands of dollars getting through a process. So, I do believe that a lot of our revisions are things that increase the ability for people to know about and to participate in our decisions, and that's a good thing. The true question, though, that has been raised, that is a decision of council, has really been focused more on the appeal. That's the area where people have had the concern. I haven't really heard it about the notice, although there obviously was some people who felt that reducing or taking it down to 750 feet was a reduction that shouldn't happen for large projects. And again, we will go with whatever the council chooses. We're okay with that. We just ask for that consistency so that we do not make a mistake that could hurt the city in the long run.
Well, I personally think we should, if it's not huge in cost to the developer, it doesn't sound like it is, just make it a flat 1,000 feet. That will make everybody happy. That way, everybody knows what the rules are. So, I think, you know, I'd like to support at least motion one. And then the other motion, or that was actually motion two, to increase from 750 to 1,000. Yeah, well, we already had these motions, but, I mean, I'm just throwing out my thoughts right now. I'm not making a motion at this point, just letting everybody, council, know what my thoughts are. Yeah, and I also, since we had a lot of pushback on, people felt that any resident at any time should be able to appeal. You know, I think our motion one addresses that. You know, personally, I disagree with motion three, which takes Eugene out of the loop. But I, you know, I guess that's not a battle I want to go down fighting over. It's not that big of a deal to me. But to me, it would actually help the appeal process because he'd be a help to the person, not a hindrance, because he would explain to them why their appeal was just or not just, and give them an opportunity to fix it. And to me, that's a benefit. But for some reason, with the people in the city are pretty nervous about that. So, you know, like I said, that's not one of the battles that I want to go down and fight for. So, Councilmember Christensen.
Okay, I have one question about motion one, and I also have some other questions. Motion one seems to restore the right to any resident of the city of Longmont to appeal. Is that correct? Okay, but not any resident of Colorado?
No.
And why is that? I know. Just explain it.
Well, Mayor, Councilmember Christensen, first, I'd like to ask you to clarify the question a little bit. Any resident of Colorado, or is this what's existing in code standing or with standing?
Yes, well, I think maybe for the audience, it would be useful to explain why the language "any resident with standing in the state of Colorado" was taken out and replaced by this, which I appreciate this anyway, because at least we have citizens of Longmont can appeal.
So, motion number one was an attempt to reflect some of the concerns of some council members, and to give council the opportunity to figure out what it wanted to have in the right-to-appeal provision for major development applications. So, this motion could even be amended to include all people who have standing under Colorado law, as our code currently says.
Yes.
That said, the reason why this motion doesn't contain that and why that change was made in the draft over current code is because it's a very hard standard to apply. The courts have trouble figuring out who has standing. There are battles in court all the time, and it's not always an easy question to answer. So, to put that burden on staff, on the council even, to figure out whether an individual has standing, just seems too hard to apply.
Okay, and that's because none of us actually understand what standing means.
Yours truly concluded.
Good. Tell us. Would you tell us? Oh.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Standing simply is the word that we use in law that says, "You do or do not have the right to bring forth legal action, whether it be a quasi-judicial setting like city council or court." And what we were talking about before, and I mean, my thought on why don't we allow anyone in Colorado to appeal is because we would be faced with a line, a whole host of every public interest group who opposed Walmart, or Costco, or apartment buildings, or we would become ground zero for anybody who wanted to have a pulpit and a television to, you know, basically have a voice. I personally think that, I mean, I said it before, I'm not going to vote for it. I'm against having Eugene. I mean, I view it as Eugene would facilitate the process. That would be a great idea. But unfortunately, I think on the far left and the far right in this town, I'm going to make enemies to everybody right now. But on the far left and far right, people like coming to that podium, and we don't have a movie theater. This is ground zero for entertainment. And so, nobody wants help. What they want is the podium to basically beat their shoe and have a forum. And so, it's bad enough that we're moving towards having the city become, you know, the forum of standing, but to go towards statewide would just be...
Crazy.
Yeah, right. That would be, yeah.
We had statewide. Now, we're restricting it to...
Not yet.
Yes. Why? All right. The other part of my question, if I may, go on, is that this... I think that the only thing that people actually do have a problem with is the appeal section. And that's because this is a very, very different... The whole appeal section has been rewritten. It changes completely who can appeal, what they can appeal, and how they can appeal. And these are, some of these ideas, like, the only thing that can be appealed is an egregious error by Planning and Zoning, which has to be appealed in seven days. Egregious error isn't really defined. It sets up a hostile relationship with the public, with Planning and Zoning and the public. I don't understand why we're making these changes to the appeal process. The number of people who can appeal has been cut way back. City council can't even appeal, except now, under this motion, they can. No, they can't. Residents. You can appeal as a resident. And they have to go through a process which starts out from Planning and Zoning. Most of the people in this city do not, they want to go to their elected representatives because we're accountable. They don't know that they need to go through Planning and Zoning. And they never will really understand this. Think of how many people actually show up at Planning and Zoning and speak. Very few. So, you know, I just think that this is... I would support motion one, and motion two, and motion three, but I still think that this is a very flawed piece of... The appeals thing is very flawed because it excludes people instead of including them. And I think you see this when you talk about the Planning and Zoning meeting that happened in April 23rd. It was particularly, Commissioner Gerdberg said he was very uncomfortable with something that was exclusionary rather than inclusionary. And I would agree with that. Thank you. Councilmember Henry.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, having been on Planning and Zoning as the council liaison and watching this go through the process, I am just impressed with the clarity with which you've presented it. I'm impressed with the clarity of the outcome compared to what it was before. One of the biggest complaints I heard when I was running for city council was that our planning process was so incomprehensible that even the staff would have different interpretations of parts of it. And with this new, with this new revision, I think we'll have a lot less of that. I don't think it'll go away, but I think we'll have a lot less of it. I, you know, I don't think it makes a whole lot of difference whether it's 750 feet or 1,000 feet. So, I would not care either way. We've not been overrun with a lot of people wanting to appeal in the last three and a half years. What have we heard? Maybe two appeals, three appeals? So, I don't think it will make much difference in the number of appeals that we get should we change it or amend it. But I think the work in general is outstanding, and I'm looking forward to hearing what the rest of the council says.
Councilmember Robinson.
Thank you. I think I am the only council person who's done two appeals in front of this when I was not on council. One won, and lost one. I'm just curious, with the new standard for what you can base an appeal on, it seems that it's no longer simply a matter of opinion, that the interpretation of the code can be different, and it could be that the new standard that you'd have to... Again, it sets up an accusatory system where you have to prove somehow that staff made such an error, or there was an error judgment, or some piece of corruption or ethical defect in the planning and zoning body in order to even hope to be successful in front of city council. But I think that that standard, writing that level standard in, is too high. So, I really feel uncomfortable about, and I don't really think I can, given my past personal experience, vote for that section of the code amendments. The other part of the proposed revisions for major development appeals, I actually like the listing in your PowerPoint slide on what the existing people can, what existing parties are. And I don't find that list is really as extensive in the language we're hearing that we're seeing to look at the right to appeal and who's able to appeal in this motion one. And I would support going to the standard, a standard of 1,000 feet. I think what makes me also very uncomfortable is that while we have maybe a clear process in place, there seems to be an increase in the amount of discretion of the planning services manager or director. And I'm not looking simply at the person who currently occupies this post, but in general, allowing so many things administratively to happen where people won't even know, unless there's some other reporting to council or to the community every four months, perhaps, of what administrative decisions were made. Having that much discretion, I think, to a person that's a staff member, and nothing that will come in front of an elected body, could really change, fundamentally change, the way things happen. And I know there is some relevance to say, there are things that we need to update that really don't need to have as an extensive process. But as we approach build-out, I think that people are going to be more and more concerned about these little bits of infill property. And I think there's got to be some way that we have a report back to the community about what has been decided on administratively. And I don't see anything in the process that outlines that. And, you know, otherwise, how would people find out? Maybe they'd want to give the planning services manager a piece of information that only they know. Maybe they're an adjacent property owner, and they know something that's not in the public record. But they won't even know anything is happening to give that information unless we can have some way that they can find that out. That's not something, you know, we discussed before. You know, I also like what the existing administrative appeal list is for folks. And the proposed gives the city manager the ability to appeal something, but not a person that would have standing under Colorado law. Or even, I mean, the person having standing under Colorado law could simply be the next-door neighbor. So, we would, you know, we're adding the city manager. But again, if the next-door neighbor doesn't know any of it's happening, you know, they can't be part of the process. I guess I'm not in favor of having the city attorney be the gatekeeper. Again, not because I distrust our current city attorney, but the way the code was written, it actually doesn't say they have to help people. They can just, it just simply says, "You tell someone if it meets the threshold or not." I know that Eugene has gone above and beyond to help people understand what they're doing. And I think that that's a great attitude, but we may not have that in future city attorneys. So, you know, there's some of this I like, some of it I don't like. I'm not sure I can, you know, wholeheartedly push the yes button on all these changes. And I'm not even comfortable with all the items considered in the additional motions you've given us.
Councilmember Bradley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'm just going to, should we just start making motions?
Yeah.
So, I'm actually going to move that we take the proposed, we take, let's see here. I'm going to move that we take the Amendment to Chapter 15.02, the Longmont Land Development Code as presented. I'm not moving on the motion, but just I move that we strike and delete paragraph four of section two, specifically section 15.02.020, K. 4 through 7, the section pertaining to the city attorney's involvement.
So, this basically the motion three?
Motion three.
All right. It's started on there.
Let's vote on that.
Hold on, mayor and council. I, I just want to be clear, is it motion three or is it deleting four through seven? Because those are actually different.
No, paragraph, I'm sorry, the, just sorry, deleting paragraph four, section A and B.
Might I suggest that you make motion three because there's another part that references that section that you would be deleting that we're all?
Yeah, and getting rid of little, little, little three I, paragraph C. So yeah, basically, I move motion three as written on our desk, which is essentially getting rid of paragraph four, section two, paragraph, sub-paragraph A and B, and paragraph seven, little C, as motion three.
Okay, it's been moved and who seconded? Okay, let's vote.
Yeah, we got it.
Okay, that passes seven to zero.
And I also move that we adopt motion two, extending the notification distance to 1,000 feet.
All right. Let's vote on that. That passes seven to zero. Councilmember Mar.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move to approve motion one as presented in the city council package.
Okay, I'll second it. Okay, let's, councilmember.
Sorry, I just think you should read that into the motion so that people know what motion one is.
Okay. Um, yeah. All right. I move to amend, I move to amend ordinance by amending section one of the ordinance, sub-paragraph 1502 dot 20 dot, or hyphen, K parentheses I D to read as follows. D, the right to appeal, parties in interest, major development applications, appeals of decisions on major development applications may be filed by the following: the applicant, the owner of the subject property, any person or organization entitled under this chapter to written notice of the public hearing in the application, any person who testified or submitted written comments to the application as a public hearing on the application, but not including persons who only signed mass petitions, any resident of the city of Longmont, or the planning and services director or city manager.
Councilmember Levinson.
However, this will not, would not include anybody who asks to be put on a notice list. Or would it?
Mayor, Councilmember Levinson, it would.
Okay, that would.
It would allow anybody, in my case, Dan, to tell me he wants to receive official written notice. He would get that, he would be a party then.
However, it would not allow organizations to appeal if they were not on the list. Like, I'm thinking, like, Longmont Housing Authority wouldn't be able to appeal unless they, because they wouldn't necessarily be an entity or organization. Or Longmont Area Economic Council, if there was a, a major development review that involved commercial property or mixed industrial, for example, they didn't get any notice of the change in mixed industrial, having multifamily and affordable housing in mixed industrial. So they wouldn't be able to appeal any of those decisions either. So any major organization that just happened to miss the boat would be excluded.
Councilmember Lovison.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Instead of voting on this motion, why don't we just have another motion that says we just keep that particular section the exact same as it is?
What?
Look at him, he can't say nothing, he's just sitting there.
The other motion has been seconded, we have to vote on it before we mean it.
In response to Councilmember Levinson's point, I was just going to say, if they had testified or submitted written comments at Planning and Zoning Commission, then they would have standing internally within our processes to appeal. That's an exception to what you were saying.
Okay, we've got a motion that's been seconded, let's vote.
Let's not put that to more than both, but one of both.
Okay, that passes five to with Councilmembers Santos and Finley descending.
Mayor, if you'd like to act now on the, or don't we have to act on the original?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, I would move the original motion. As amended.
Yes. Okay, let's vote on that. Okay, that passes seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much, have a good night.
Our next item is item F, that's the Latino Chamber of Commerce Agreement, and Sean Lewis
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, Sean Lewis, Assistant City Manager. Changing seats here. I wanted to pull this item mainly because we have got a couple of changes that we wanted to go over with you all. Councilmember Levinson, as you may recall, at a recent meeting, requested some specific items in this contract. She and I conversed about some of the points in the contract, and she had some very good suggestions, and a couple of those did not make it in the final document. And so I wanted to go over those three changes with you, as well as one that came up this morning in our economic partners meeting, related to the Longmont Downtown Development Authority. So the first one that Councilmember Levinson pointed out was just that we needed to make this agreement not just specific to Latino, but also all minority groups, which is actually what the Latino Chamber speaks to. And so I think that that one is represented now. She also noted that, that the activity reports that we would ask for are not biannual, which would be every two years, but rather semi-annual. So you'll see in line number two, we've made that change, or you won't see it, but we have made that change to semi-annual. And then also that the installments would be 10 installments of 2,000 each instead of 12 installments since we're already two months into the year. So really, just some housekeeping items that I appreciate her bringing to our attention. The last one that I wanted to go over with you was specifically requested by the Longmont Downtown Development Authority. So this morning, when we were going over in our partner meeting, the things that we're working on, I brought this agreement up, noted that LAEC had been kind enough to review that since they are mentioned in the agreement as a partner, that we want the Latino Chamber to partner with them in helping bring Latino businesses and minority-owned businesses to the LAEC for services. And Kimberly Key with LDDA noted that she would really like the same assistance from the Latino Chamber. So I contacted Jose, we traded emails today, and he said he would be glad to have them added in as a partner in this. So I, I am not proposing that we change the number of businesses, particularly in this first year for the next 10 months, but the number of businesses right now in the contract is 10 businesses that, that they would really bring to either now the LAEC or the LDDA for those grant services and other resources. And so I left that number the same, but I am proposing in this modified agreement that we'd like for you to approve, if you're comfortable, to add them into that. And with that, I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Councilmember Levinson.
So you're talking about adding it under section one of services, 1.5, to add, it says assisting Longmont Area Economic Council and Longmont Downtown Development Authority.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Lovison.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Let me go ahead and just, there is one controversial comment I'd like to make, because, well, it'll be controversial and, and I think I'm probably the best one to maybe make it. I, I am all for a contract with the Latino Chamber, all for it. I think in general, when you've got an organization that recognizes that there's a underserved population in our community, I think it's good to encourage organizations to reach out. I think that the Latino community in general, there are, I mean, in general, we're speaking generally, I think that there is a need to encourage them to serve on boards, to bring their business here, to get engaged in the Chamber and LAEC. I mean, that is a, is a desire that I have, that I think council has. The only thing that makes me hesitate about this is I'm against the $10,000 leadership scholarship as defined by race or ethnicity. I'm married to a woman who is Mexican, she doesn't need a scholarship, I can pay for it. I've got, so I've got two Latinas, a 16-year-old and my wife, I've got four Latino boys who are, you know, they need dire help in the, in the realm of leadership, you know? And so I, I am just hesitant, you know, to say, I think in general, when you're giving money or a contract to the Latino Chamber and you say, go out and accomplish this goal, that's one thing. But when you start specifically focusing out someone based on their race, to segregate them for leadership opportunities, I think it's other criteria. I think it's all too easy to say, Mr. May, you're a minority, I think we're gonna give you a scholarship. Dave Santos, you're a minority, I think we're gonna give you a scholarship. You know, Bagley children, I mean, we don't, they don't, my kids don't need that because we're of an economic class that we don't need the scholarships. So I would, I would consider, or I would advocate that we consider making a different criteria or not doing the $10,000 right now, because there are, I'm sure there are members of the community that are economically or socio-economically challenged and has nothing to do with their race. So that, that's, that's, that's the comment I wanted to throw out there. So I'm all for it, but would actually propose that we remove the $10,000 scholarship idea for, for that, for that reason alone. And, and anyway.
Councilmember Levinson.
Well, I'm sorry I have to really disagree with you, Brian Bagley, on this point. Part of the leadership development aspect, especially why we're asking Latino Chamber to help with this, is that they are established as a trusted partner with minority-owned and Latino-owned businesses. They have a different segment of the community they work with that in some ways has to, because of the cultural differences, would be more open to be recruited by people they know and people that can see potential. There, a lot of them are not folks that travel in the same circles that we typically see for some of the leadership development. And I think that this council has been very focused on broadening our base of leadership development. And there are folks in the community that have challenges, some of the programs, the cost of programs can be prohibitive, especially for small business owners, not just the cost of the program, but the fact that they are away from their businesses. And, you know, we've not done a great job with seeing a lot of diversity in some of our leadership programs. So I will support this. I also think that with the partnership with LAEC and LDDA, some of the leadership development that happens can then be channeled to work with these other organizations that typically have not had a strong representation or partnership with Latino businesses. So I think we're looking, trying to be a little future-forward on this, this issue. And I also think that when the program is established, my hope would be that there's a committee that's formed to look at the balance of, you know, true need for people that can afford to pay for their own leadership development, but also look at folks that may not, maybe they've got a, a great business, but they're not making a lot of money, and they can get that extra push to be a better businessperson and, and be more productive if they had access to a leadership program that would help them to develop skills. So I'd like to look at some need-based criteria and, and make sure we really focus on getting people involved.
Mayor Coombs, if I could just redirect to Councilmember Levinson, so you would say, for instance, administering a need-based scholarship program of up to 10,000, which I think you had requested up to 10,000, so it wouldn't be an automatic 10,000. Is that what you would propose, which would then require the Latino Chamber to make it some sort of criterion?
Councilmember Christensen.
Well, Sean may have said it better than I was planning to say it, which is probably always gonna be true. I was gonna, I do see what you're saying, Brian, and I, I agree that sometimes money is given to people who actually have plenty of money, and if it's not merit-based, I mean, if it's so-called merit-based, it often goes to people who are wealthy enough in the first place to do well by themselves rather than need-based. And if we just inserted low income or need-based, would that make it? Yes, I agree, I agree.
Councilmember Lovison.
Thank you, sorry, yeah, that, that was my whole point. There needs to be another component. You should be focusing on minorities, but there needs to be a need-based component, because it's a necessary but insufficient requirement.
Councilmember Lovison.
I think really the point is to expand the access to leadership development in the communities. And I guess when we're saying need-based, I mean, I don't think the assumption is that we're going to look at people that are, you know, 30, you know, do some provision that it has to be 30% AMI or something like that. I would think need-based would be, or we could say sliding scale too, because it could be that people can't pay the full freight, but they, you know, we can look at a sliding scale. My assumption also is that this scholarship program, there's gonna be a little committee formed, and, and we'll have a broad base of, of folks that will be giving, you know, leads and, and developing a, a solid application that people can, you know, they don't have to turn, my, my impression is we're not gonna ask people to turn their, their IRS form over, their tax return over to us, but to be able to, to gauge, we're looking at people that might be young and emerging, folks with not much income, but we also may be looking at folks that might need to extend more hours to hire an employee if they're gonna be away from the business too. So I think that, that need-based has to be a little bit qualified, but I'm sure that it can be administered through the program.
And Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Levinson, so at the end of point, 1.4, could we add the Latino Chamber will form a committee to review possible leadership program applicants? You guys are okay with that? By the way, Jose Bateta wanted me to tell you that his wife is due to deliver any minute now, and that's why he's not here, so, but I do think his... He wanted to be here.
Councilmember Levinson.
And I guess instead of writing the words need-based in, would people agree to say sliding scale? As far as, you know, what we're looking for, you know, because I don't know where we want to write in need-based, but it could be need-based on a sliding scale, or we can just have that as an understanding when we draft the, and when the, the parameters of the scholarship program are drafted, could we just have that language in there? Would you feel comfortable about that, Councilmember Bagley? Or do you want to have something like sliding scale written into the contract?
Councilmember Lovison.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I, I mean, my whole point, I don't think that we can micromanage this. I, I think that we're basically saying, we're gonna trust the Latino Chamber to administer $10,000, and the guidance we should give them is that they should be minorities in the community, but there should be a need-based component to it. And if they decide that it should be sliding scale, or give $2,000 to five people, or create an event and use $10,000 and invite 400 Latino and Black and Asian create an event and use $10,000 and invite 400 Latino and Black and Asian members of our community, you know, I mean, we're basically saying, "We trust you, and what you do with the money is fine, and the next year, we'll determine whether or not we, you know, continue doing it based on how well you've been stewards of our money, or the city's money." Oh, my, I would, I would, where would I stick it? Well, I'd know that if my, my new technology hadn't just turned off. I would probably stick it in, yeah, a needs-based scholarship program. That's exactly right.
Counselmember Levison?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. And according to the contract, we will be getting semi-annual reports. So, we'll see that and how it's administered, it'll come back to council. So, when we go to renew a contract, as we do with all other contracts, we at least now have some basis of making a recommendation to proceed for the next year. So, are we done, Wordsmith?
Yeah, I think we're done. Let's move it.
Counselmember Levison?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we, with the amendments, accept the, and approve the contract, and have you sign a contract with the Latino Chamber of Commerce.
Second.
Okay, let's vote. Here, that passes 7 to 0.
Mayor Coombs, the next item is the legislative items, and Sandy Seder will address questions on them collectively or individually?
Well, probably, or Counselmember Christensen filled the events. I would move that we oppose SB 15, I, I would move that we follow all the suggestions we have, but I would like us to oppose SB 15-172 and HB 15-1119, and, oh, I'm sorry. Never mind. I would like us to oppose the oil and gas bills, HB 15-1119 and SB 15-093. They are punitive and not in the best interest of the City of Longmont, because we have interests that, I mean, we have stated our position on that, and these are directed specifically against the City of Longmont and others, other municipalities who have sought to maintain their sovereignty.
Didn't one of those pass by the committee anyway, or no?
Mayor Coombs, members of council, no. House Bill 1119 is still awaiting witness testimony for two weeks now, solid, it's been held over. And Senate Bill 93 passed through the Senate, so it's headed for the House. It will likely die, and 1119 will likely die from the House, but Counselmember Christensen is correct, these are pretty punitive bills. The likelihood of them passing is small, but...
You never know.
Yeah, never know.
Counselmember Levison?
I'm sorry, I thought I saw Councilmember Finley's.
You go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to let folks know that at the Colorado Municipal League Executive Board meeting on Friday, we took up a opposition position to these two bills. The other bill that I would like to bring up for consideration is there's a, a bill 15-1024 that seeks to expand the number of slots by 3,000, part-time or 1,500 full-time slots for the Colorado preschool program. That would, this Colorado preschool program is a effort to, Sandy didn't write them up, but it would support the efforts that our city is working on to increase quality and access to preschool for children in need, children living in poverty, to allow them to get a great start on learning. My understanding from talking to some other organizations, that because of the $11 million fiscal note, because it would, that's how much it would cost to expand the program by that many slots, that it's unlikely to be approved. But if, if you don't mind, we can vote on this motion, but I would also like to bring up a support position on that. I'm not sure if I'll be called to testify. I did testify in front of the committee that wrote this piece of legislation, and since we are already working in this area of policy, I think it would be great to take a support position.
Counselmember Bagley? Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I actually learned something in my law practice this week that relates to oil and gas. Very rare that I learn anything, because I'm usually not paying attention, but the, I learned that you do not get taxed on your oil and gas mineral rights until you have a lease. They're basically not worth anything. So, interestingly enough, you know, if you just, if you own mineral rights unless you've got a lease, you know, you're not, you're not, they're technically not worth anything. You might be able to sell them for lots of money, but the county's not going to, going to tax you on it. And the other thing is, that kind of rubs me the wrong way about these particular bills, is that in the event that this passes, you know, it's Longmont's Police and Fire Department that would respond if these Weld County wells go up, not Greeley, not the Weld County Commissioners, not the Sheriff's Department, it would be us. So, if it passes, I'd want to come back and, you know, relook at our intergovernmental agreements and, and not, not respond, let them burn, so, I mean, the wells, not the, not a toe in the hunk.
Counselmember Santos?
I'm trying, I'm trying not to stop laughing. I have no problem with opposition. My concern is that at CML, was, did you vote in favor? We had not taken a position. That's my, that's my concern. In fact, a couple of these bills, the construction defect lawsuit, SB 15-177, at CML, they were taking support, not support. I abstained because we had not, had not taken a position on, on those bills. I think it's inappropriate, when you represent the City of Longmont on a board, on another outside board of commission, to take a position on something we hadn't seen yet, which I took into consideration at CML. Because I may have been in favor of or against, but I'm waiting for council's directive to say, "Yes, the City of Longmont has actually taken a formal position on SB or HB, what have you." I, I have some concerns about that. I also have concerns of, of not seeing legis, potential legislation that we want to support that's being brought up tonight without seeing exactly, we haven't seen it. You know, I've talked about this before, where we've had members of the public bring a resolution to council that we got that night. I think it's inappropriate. None of us have been able to see who's the sponsor, who's, is there a sponsor in the House, is there a sponsor in the Senate? But my, but my, I guess my biggest concern is that members of council taking positions where council hasn't made a position yet.
Counselmember Santos, just to clarify, you're talking about your seat on Dr. Cog, right, at CML?
That's correct.
The other piece that I would just mention is that any member of council can bring up any piece of legislation, and I will do the, the research and bring it back to you. So, I'm happy to do that with 1024, if that's, if that's the pleasure of the council. I already have another one that we're going to need to oppose anyway, so I'll be, which you haven't seen yet, so, I'll be bringing back another one, next regular session anyhow. If you'd like to add this one to it. By any means, anytime that any council member would like to see a piece of legislation, I'm absolutely happy to bring it up for consideration.
Well, I would like to see you bring back Sarah's recommendation, and we can have a, you know, a little time to, I, I mean, I'm always for kids' education and preschool education, so I'd probably support it, but I think it's unfair for us to see it. You know, I sit on the Metropolis Mayor's Conference, and we've had a couple of discussions on this construction defects, and the Metropolis Mayor's Conference, basically as a whole, really supports changing that. You know, I didn't take a position for or against, you know, precisely because we haven't agreed as a, as a board, as a council, to do that. But I definitely personally am for doing something with construction defects, and I think it does help the housing problem, so.
And Mayor Coombs, members of council, one other thing that I just want to mention is that Senate Bill 172 was killed in committee today. So, you can still oppose it, it's really fine with me, but it'll just add to my box score if you do, so.
Okay, great. Counselmember Levison?
Yes, I'd like to do some clarification around votes when we are elected to some of these outside boards. I've had extensive discussions with the city attorney and our lobbying staff, and when I was elected by the membership of the Colorado Municipal League to serve on the board, I represent large-city category. And so, many times, I do not vote on anything at all. In fact, I have very visibly gotten up and left the room when there had been any past discussions around legislation or anything else involving oil and gas. However, what we voted on was to support the recommendation of the lobbying staff. And because I represent the large-city category, I have an obligation, I could say, "Well, our city hasn't taken a position on this." But I'm sitting there with other large cities and a, a membership organization that we have accepted their advocacy positions, is asking you to take a position for advocating for and directing their staff and agreeing with what their position is. We've accepted all of the Colorado Municipal League lobbying positions already, as far as in general, you know, all the principles, and they had outlined their positions, one way or another, for legislation based on the principles in their policy statement that we support. Local control, and these, both these bills are, go to local control, unfunded mandates. And so, in some respects, I am just following my representative position for large cities, and not just specifically for Longmont. There are other members of the board who represent small cities, medium cities, Mayor Fort Collins was there, you know, we take the measure of the cities of various sizes and do our best to represent the interests of those-sized cities. So, I was not specifically representing the City of Longmont as a unique entity, I was serving a different capacity and position. And I, you know, had extensive conversations with what my votes at the executive board are, with what the City of Longmont has for policy. I've cleared that with the city attorney.
Mayor Coombs, members of council, that's, that's Sam Mamet's position on Sarah's policy there specifically, is that she's representing and was elected for large cities, as opposed to Mayor Coombs, you're representing the City of Longmont. That's, that's definitely been his philosophy as well.
Okay. Counselmember Levison?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Counselmember Levison, thank you for those thoughts. Counselmember Santos, you too. I move...
We did. Well, nobody seconded it.
No, I'm, I'm going to make sure that, so I move that, that with item 9I, that we actually adopt the staff recommendations as listed therein.
Second.
And not, not oil and gas?
Oh.
Yeah, and oil and gas.
Including opposing, and, yeah, and can I alternate, can I alter my, my motion real quick, in this, in this second? And, and that we oppose HB 15-1119 and SB, or Senate Bill 15-093.
Okay.
Okay, let's vote on that. That passes 7 to 0.
And then Mayor.
Counselmember Levison?
Thank you. Mayor, may I request that staff bring us back information on that, the bill, House Bill 15-1024?
Yep.
Do we need a formal motion on that? Thank you.
Hey, Mayor Coombs, your next item in my business is municipal judge compensation review.
That passes 7 to 0.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Judge compensation, hmm, what are we going to do? I move that we, you guys are putting me on the spot.
I know. I, I would recommend that we increase the judge's compensation by 5%.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, 5%?
5%.
Discussion, or let's vote? Okay, that passes 7 to 0.
Your final item is the use of $16,500 of contingency, council contingency funds for Chino Trip, and Rigo Leo will introduce this.
Good evening, Mayor, and councilmembers. I'm Rigo Leo, I'm the city's public information officer. I'm also the liaison between the sister cities board and the city manager's office. I have no formal presentation for you tonight, I think the council communication is pretty clear. Longmont's sister city of Chino, Japan, has invited Mayor Coombs to attend the commemoration of the 25th anniversary of the sister city's relationship with Longmont. However, the mayor is unable to travel at the end of July. If one or more of you would like to attend the formal ceremonies in Chino, then you will have to approve using council contingency funds to pay for those travel expenses. So, that's it, I'll step aside and just let you discuss your options.
Counselmember Santos?
And let the rocks begin. No, I've asked the staff from, from time to time, since Mayor Baum and I came back from Chino, and actually Mayor Lang and I came back from Guzman, to add to the council travel fund, potential trips to our sister cities. The sister cities, and each, each of those sister cities see this as a benefit for them to come here to Longmont, and for us to return and go to those, each sister city. I, I read the mayor of Chino's letter, the small festivities, they do nothing small, and you are programmed from the time that you arrive, from the time that you leave. This isn't a junket where you're on vacation. And including, and to the Guzman, Mayor Lang and I were there for 36 hours, and from the time we got off the plane, from the time we got back on the plane, it was a whirlwind trip. I know, from the sister cities in Chino, they've asked for me to come back. I'd be more than willing to go back. But that, of course, that means time away from family, that means time away from business and things of that nature, which I'm, that I can, can and am willing to do. But I, I think this has become a political football for some, where, you know, members of council are going, you know, to, to Japan on a full-expense-paid trip. No, it's actually a working, I mean, probably, whoever goes will probably work harder on that trip than they will being a council member here for that whole week, if you go for a week. Again, whatever we decide this evening, I would hope that we would start at least sending a council member or two, or the mayor, you know, the mayor included, of course, to our sister cities, because we, because they have sent members of council here. And either we support our sister cities program, or we don't. And that's the main, one of the main issues. We either have bought into it completely, and not just having things in, in the mall, or flags in the, in the mayor and council office, but we actually are supportive of the sister cities and sister cities organization we have.
I'd like to weigh in here, you know, because I was the one that was actually personally invited, and, you know, it's been a month of hemming and hawing, and, you know, just July is just a really, really tough month, because it's the busiest month of my business here in town. I'm also involved in a big fundraiser for Children's Hospital that month, and just the timing was not right, and I honestly, I mean, can't stand being in an airplane for 15 hours. It's like torture beyond belief. in an airplane for 15 hours. It's like torture beyond belief. It's hard. So, you know, I think it's important for someone from our city, I don't care if it's one person, or two persons, or three persons go on this trip. And, you know, I think it's also important for the public to realize that we cannot go out and fundraise. You can self-fund your trip, but we're not allowed to fundraise, you know, and get gifts. You know, it's just not legally something that you can do. So, you know, if it's someone that isn't, you know, doesn't have a big bank account, they can't go on a trip like this unless we do council contingency funds. So I would support, you know, this effort, and I don't care if it's one person, or two persons, or three persons. So that's my feelings. I'm just grateful that someone other than myself is going, because I think it's important. And so I'm gonna support it. Councilmember Lewison?
Thank you, mayor. You know, my comments, after reading the newspaper article, really are concerns about not just public perception, and folks thinking that, you know, we could just call up our friends and have them give us money. It is, if we would ask council to do that, we would be asking them to violate state law. There is state ethics law, and I'm, I would really like the city attorney to go over some of these things, to make sure that both the press and the viewing public, and the non-viewing public, understand that when you're an elected official, that we are very much restricted in what we do to accept items of value. It's state ethics law. It's also even to have the sister cities' organization receive the donation. State ethics law covers the situation where you can't just use a nonprofit organization to pass through money to you. There are very few options legally available to council members to go out and do the work that we need to do. Secondly, we have to understand a little bit more about sister cities. I support and commend Councilmember Santos for his comments. The, we're talking about, you know, intergovernmental, intercultural relationships. The, we have to understand a little bit about the culture of our sister city. The Japanese are huge on protocol. When the mayor and the mayor pro tem cannot attend, I do not want the city of Chino to feel that we have slighted them. So sending a third council member would really show that we stand behind our relationship with them. It is a very important anniversary of 25 years. We have supported this program through council budgets for a very long time, 25 years. The community supports this program. And I really believe that we have seen some economic development activity come from Japan, and it's likely that not only does Longmont have a relationship with the country of Japan, but actively the state of Colorado does. And I think we need to maintain those relationships. So I support the use of this council contingency money, but would you please give us the ins and outs of the ethics law, and make sure that we can let everyone understand, you know, what our, what our constraints are?
Aaron Council, Eugene May, city attorney. So there is Amendment 41, amending the Colorado Constitution, which prohibits gifts to elected officials in excess of $53. There are limited exceptions to the gift ban for reasonable travel expenses paid for by a nonprofit organization or other state or local government for attendees to, for attendance at conventions, backfunding missions, or trips, provided that the nonprofit organization receives 5% or less of its funding from for-profit organizations or entities. So those are the parameters. I don't know the details about what sort of fundraising was being contemplated, but I did wanna raise those limitations imposed by Amendment 41.
Councilmember Lewison?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I have been the liaison to the sister cities for three years now, and nobody supports it more than I do with my money and my time. I've gone to Guzman as well, on my own dime, in order to visit with them. It's such a worthwhile program, and had the mayor agreed to, or been able to go, I would have fully supported us paying his trip. Or even the mayor pro tem Bagley and his wife, I'd have supported that too.
Thank you.
I think that's a good use of our funds. I think three of us going on the taxpayers' dime is just too many. And that's the reason I suggested perhaps we do our own fundraising like the children do. I, I do, I still think that could have been done through sister cities or the Longmont Foundation. Either one of those groups would have met the qualifications for a nonprofit with less than 5% of those funds being disqualified. But I can't in good conscience go on the city's money. I don't mind if Polly and Gabe go on the city's money, but I can't in good conscience do that when we've raised everybody's fees. And I know that's another pot of money, but that is public perception and of what we do. And I think it's, I think it's, whether, you know, that's a good thing or a bad thing, I, I'd still like to go, but I don't wanna be in that. So if you can take mine out, I'll vote for it. That's how I feel about it.
Councilmember Lewison?
I appreciate what Councilman Santos said. This isn't a pleasure trip. It's a business and a cultural exchange trip to represent the city of Longmont and its residents. And it requires time away from family and other obligations. The pre-hail's trip to Japan by Mayor Baum and Mayor Pro Tem Santos were, was paid for by city funds, without any controversy. I would be happy to do this. I have a degree in East Asian Studies. I spent a lifetime reading about and studying Japanese history, culture, literature, art, spoke art, and I'm very familiar with Shinto and Buddhism. I think I'd be a very good representative for Longmont, but I don't want this to be a controversy. I, we, city council members cannot go around hat in hand to our friends and family begging for money to do the work of the city. This job is my only salary. I receive a total of $791.43 each month for 10 to 20 hours of work per week. So self-funding this would require me to spend 50% of my yearly salary in order to finance a job for the city. Like most of the residents of Longmont, I don't have a spare $5,500 hanging around. So I would gladly withdraw my name if that's what people want, but I would also gladly go and represent Longmont, and I think I would be a very good representative. So it's up to the council. Thank you.
Councilmember Lewison?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Oh, I love this one. My name wasn't in there. I love these kind of topics. You know, I can run my mouth, my name wasn't in the paper, can't go, I wasn't even invited. This is awesome. I just love this topic. I say, what time did we get out? 11? We've got 15 minutes left. I think, I mean, first of all, I mean, it's easy for me to say, you know, we should never travel, because I'm busy with work, and I just don't ever travel because of my work commitments. However, the, I'm also a big fan of sister cities. Sometimes that's not apparent, but I give up my wife's time. She's not on the board, but she has an administrative position, and kind of is the workhorse of the committee, where she arranges for all the places where the kids stay, and travel arrangements, and all that kind of stuff. I asked her, incidentally, why she doesn't run for the board, and she wants to have the ability to quit anytime she wants, but she hasn't done that yet. So my understanding is that Sister Cities was first established by Dwight Eisenhower to basically provide the youth of America the opportunity to be exposed to international cultures, with the understanding that that would make a healthier international environment, make our country stronger, and avoid the pitfalls of little things like World War II. And so, I mean, I think it's good that we send our youth. However, I think that it's not a question of whether it's a junket, or whether we wanna go, or don't wanna go, or whether it's fun, or work. To me, it's just a question of opportunity cost. We have finite dollars, and we can only use them in certain places. And over the last three and a half years serving in council, I've just become increasingly more cringe, not cringeworthy, but I cringe easier when we're asked to spend money. And, you know, sending three council members, I mean, quite frankly, I mean, I really do value the relationship we have with these cities, because our youth exchange, it's our youth's relationship. I don't look towards Chino, and I don't look towards Ciudad Guzman for, you know, economic stability and support. It's basically a cultural exchange. And so whether or not we, you know, insult them, you know, buy me a new car, you're gonna insult me. I'll have a bigger impact on your life if you don't make me happy than the people at Chino. So I mean, I just don't, I think we should send one. I think it would be appropriate to pay, to have, you know, send one, or divvy it up among three. But it would be, I know the children, my daughter was considering traveling, and we had a talk, and she'd have to work her butt off to raise the five grand. It stinks. And the whole reason why we're talking, there is a little bit of a junket component, at least politically, people will perceive it as such, or else the city attorney would be saying, it's not a big deal, it's worth it. Go. You know, the Kennedy School of Government offers a grant to go out and get trained. We go to CML, and that travel is more than $53. There is definitely a component of, oh, cool, we get to go experience a new culture. And I just don't think that city funds should go towards one, more than one of us going. I can understand sending someone as acting mayor, because the mayor can't go, but I just would only support one of us going on contingency, or any funds coming from the taxpayer. And if somebody else wants to go, then regardless of how cash-strapped we are, we can look for other options other than pulling it out of city coffers. That's what I think.
Councilmember Lewison?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I guess I kind of come down on a lining list of Mayor Pro Tem Bagley on this. I agree it's important to send somebody. I don't know that we are getting our full bang for the buck to send three. So I would be supportive of sending one person, taking that out of council contingency, so.
So my question is, you got three people that wanna go, they're all three qualified, what would you send? Councilmember Lewison?
Well, you know, Councilmember Santos has been there already. And Councilmember, you know, I'm not sure how much Councilmember Finley wants to go, but I also did not know until today, just now, how much Councilmember Christiansen had studied Japan, and, you know, had really had an interest in that culture longstanding. So, you know, I think that many of us have, you know, made room for others, and certainly, when I leave the council, I think that, you know, I've helped make room for others, especially, you know, encouraging others to be involved with National League of Cities, and happily, you know, promoting our council members. So, you know, I'd like to see Councilmember Christiansen go, just because, you know, she's one of our newest council members, and, you know, she may be the one that eventually ends up working with sister cities too. But I also see the point in the other two. And it kind of saddens me that we don't have the resources within our travel budget to send people. I'll also note that, you know, we did in past years slash our travel budget pretty severely. We don't go out of town for city council retreats any longer. We don't have that expense. We've really been frugal with it. However, on the flip side, now that we have many people involved with National League of Cities committees, and Jeff being chairman of a steering committee is now on the board, we are utilizing those funds more. But I think we're also reaping some, some great results of bringing up the profile of our city nationally. I mean, I'm still comfortable with sending all three, frankly.
Well, I guess I'm comfortable too with sending all three. I just don't know if
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. One of my consider, you know, again, one of my considerations for even thinking about going was to have that consistency of someone who has been there. The last time before Mayor Baum and I went to Chino, the last person to visit Japan was Mayor Stacker. So, I mean, there was a long period of time, in fact, we missed an anniversary, and that's pretty much what I heard the entire time I was there. There, I've kept in contact with many of the folks that I, that are in Chino and in Guzman. Again, the reason I thought myself was to go ahead and have at least someone that they knew. It's great that we have an expert on, some expertise, Councilmember Christiansen, on Japanese culture. I mean, we had a crash course as well. And then we also broke a few barriers as well, which was greatly appreciated by the mayor in Chino, who's still the mayor, by the way. Yeah, apparently they have no term limits there in Chino City. You know, and to say, you know, if I was, I know that Sean went, has been to Chino. He just happened to be in Japan and made a trip. I would have no reason to go to Guzman unless I just happened to be there. You know, I think all of us are on some sort of constrained budgets within our lives. You're there in an official capacity representing the city of Longmont.
I guess I'm gonna make the motion that we approve the use of council contingency funds to send all three people that wanna go. That's my motion.
And I'm gonna second that motion. I would have made that motion had you not done so.
Okay.
So, and I also just would like to take a look at, and just make sure people understand the council contingency funds are there for use of the council for things that we deem we wanna use them for. In past years, when we've had a crisis and not enough money in the budget, in any slice of the budget to do increased spraying for mosquitoes, we've tapped into the council contingency budget. We've tapped into the council contingency funds to help support, you know, safe shelter and other organizations who had had crisis needs. And I think that we've had great discussion about the discretion and how we use this budget, but I also think we need to examine, you know, what we had in the past for our travel budget, and how we've used it. So if you can just let us know some of that, I think we, again, I think we've been so frugal with our training budget and our retreats in the past. We've saved thousands of dollars. In fact, probably $10,000 over what council had spent on retreats prior to me being on. I remember going up to Estes Park, and people spending two nights in Estes Park with all the senior staff, and all the meals, and the mileage and everything, and that cost a boatload of money. We don't do that any longer.
Okay, I guess we've got a motion that's been seconded.
And this is, if we vote yes, it means we're paying for three people to go?
Unless one decides not to go. Or to self-fund their trip. But if we're gonna give them the option. Did you wanna say something?
Mayor Coombs, members of council, the travel budget is kind of a complicated beast, and I'm going to manage it a little differently in this next budget year. What I will do, instead of the way we've done it in the past by allocating specific numbers of trips to council members, is we will just ask you what your intentions for travel is in the next budget year, and then we will ask for those budgeted funds. So I know someone had mentioned about Mayor Baum and Councilmember Santos going to Chino before, under the idea that you have two out-of-state travels and one in-state travel. That was one of their out-of-state travels, but in this case, because so many people are going to NLC and on committees and things like that, the travel budget is tapped out with what's going on for this year, even with the frugal retreats that we are doing. So I will make sure that we change around this process for this next year, and we'll be soliciting what kinds of travel and committees and things you anticipate for 2016.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs.
And just to clarify, um, some members of council know this, and some members of council don't, um, I'm unable to go to NLC this year. Um, uh, Family Matter has, has come up, and I've had to cancel my trip. Um, I do believe that the, those members that are going, um, it is a, NLC is definitely a worthwhile conference to, for not only learning from what other cities do, but also interacting with each of the boards and commissions that we're on, and also interacting with our elected federal legislators. So unfortunately this year, um, I'm unable to attend. Um, there you go.
Mayor Coombs, one other disclarification.
I know that Councilmember Finley had mentioned that if Councilmember, uh, Mayor Protem Bagley and his wife wanted to go, no spouses are paid for by the city funds, just to be clear.
That was never an option, though.
Never an option. Not an option. Right, I just wanted to clarify that the council contingency is for council member travel only.
Mayor Coombs. So, one of the other, um, things that I recall, I know that our, um, campaign finance ordinance allows council members by statute, if you had any extra money in your campaign finance, um, account left over, you could use that to do professional development, you can travel on behalf of the city, and, um, any of those extended, unexpended funds can be used for this type of purpose. Would they not be able to be qualified for that? I guess the city attorney is making a face, but that's what, you know, that's what I recall from helping draft the ordinance. Yeah, and so we could maybe get some information around that, too, um, and that would be, um, helpful. So, in, in regards to Councilmember Santos's, um, uh, cancellation of his trip to NLC, would that free up some of the travel budget and maybe less of the council contingency fund?
Uh, Mayor Coombs, members of council, at this time, we're still working on refunding some stuff, so I don't, I don't have a, I don't have a set number as to what won't be expended with Councilmember Santos's. But if there is money left over, it's, that's just a travel estimate, so if there is money left over for any reason, we would return it back to the council contingency fund.
Okay. Well, let's vote. Okay, that passes four to three with Councilmember Moore, Councilmember Bagley, and Councilmember Finley sending.
You guys can look at me all you want.
I was looking at Barney.
Okay, I guess it's, uh, time for final call, public invited to be heard. Is there anybody from the public who'd like to come and speak?
Very quickly, um, Amy Saunders, thirteen sixty-six McClure Drive, citizen of Longmont. Um, Mayor Coombs and esteemed members of council, thank you for your dedication and service and your marathon abilities for sitting in those chairs for five, some six hours today. Um, as a citizen of Longmont, I also wanted to say thank you for keeping my standing as a citizen in regards to, um, Land Use Ordinance Amendment fifteen oh two twenty. I think it's important, especially in this time where we're reviewing a lot of different plans, that we keep the lines of communication with the citizens open, and our abilities to communicate with council in that regards, and thank you and have a good evening.
Okay, is there anyone else who'd like to come and speak? Final call, public invited to be heard. Seeing no one, I'll close. Final call, public invited to be heard. So now it's time for mayor and council comments. Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I have a business of the week. It's Twin Peaks Heating, Plumbing, and Electric. And apparently the owner of this organization has done quite a bit of nonprofit work. He donates, um, to the Longmont Humane Society and several other nonprofits, and his goal is to be known for his community service, which I think is a laudable goal. Uh, so, if your heater goes out, your hot water heater goes out, give a call to Twin Peaks Heating and Plumbing and Electric.
This will be the most anticipated and highly-attended Saturday in the history of Longmont. Saturday morning, we start off with coffee with council. Councilmember Moore and I will be up to that, and we are going to be where? The Longmont Museum. Second, we've got, um, the Asian Pacific Alliance of Longmont, A-PAL, is, um, the promoter and sponsor and organizer of this year's, um, Chinese New Year celebration, I've mentioned it before, from two to five, Silver Creek High School. And then, to top off the evening, Mexican food that is wonderful, delicious. You get to, to hear Sheriff Joe Pelli speak, and Jose Batata from the Longmont, from the, uh, Latino Chamber of Commerce of Boulder County at the El Comité fundraising dinner. Um, and I understand that the dinner is now sold out. So, if you want to still get a ticket, you will have to find a scalper and pay more than the face value of the ticket to get in. Now, I imagine there may be a couple of, of tickets left over, and I will note that while council members are attending that dinner, we are paying for our own ticket. The city is not paying for our ticket. We are doing that of our own free will. Uh, I also want to, um, encourage people to, um, you know, get out there, and there's a lot of great organizations in the community, and I know that there are a lot of students out there looking for scholarship money. So, anybody that can stick a little money in any of these scholarship funds that they're giving out, I've written several recommendation letters, and I know there are a lot of deserving students out there that could use a little bit of help, uh, paying for college. So, if you are so inclined and have the resources to support, many of the, the funds are administered through, um, local banks and, uh, the Longmont, um, Community Foundation.
I want to thank the city forestry department, who's been out cleaning the trees and, uh, has done a wonderful job. Unlike a lot of contractors, they actually clean up everything. Um, just a note to everybody, do not leave your house when they're doing this, because the large limbs are falling like two feet in front of your front door sometimes. So, just stay in and watch them and enjoy it. They have done a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs.
So, the airport came up again tonight. Um, I do want to thank Sean Lewis for his work for stepping in and managing the airport. Like, the comments that were made were not necessarily in agreement with most of the people I've talked to. Uh, he's doing a fine job, and I want to continue to support his efforts until we get the new airport manager into place. Uh, comments made by myself about the airport advisory board not getting the reports to the city council is not a function of the city of the, airport advisory board is a function of the airport manager, and that has not happened since two thousand eight. So that all comes out when you start asking the questions and making a lot of noise. The other thing is, I've been taking steps to talk with, uh, airport users, met with a couple of board members and a pilot a couple, uh, last week, where we talked about, uh, moving forward with the airport, and we talked, and we went through the complaint logs and how those numbers were being used, and, uh, moving forward, it sounds like we're going to have, uh, if a complaint is going to be registered, uh, that'll solve that problem. I also recommended that they consider taking up some of the other needs at the airport, like how do we improve revenue? It's, it's part of their charter by ordinance, and I think that that was, my impression is that, that was well-received by the people that were in attendance. We do have to understand that, um, th- these are volunteer positions, and we do, they do depend on city staff to help support them, and when we, I'm looking forward to having a new airport manager to help guide that, uh, airport process forward and, and provide advice to the airport advisory board. I have a, a good feeling about the airport as a, as an economic engine for Longmont, and I think we need to, myself as a council person, I will continue to support the airport, and want to make sure that the only issue that I've had is moral high skydiving. So, um, with that said, I am more than happy to continue to meet with anybody and everybody who wants to talk about airport issues, pilots, people in the community, any others. I, I've opened up any correspondence I've had with people, I said, "I'm, I'm more than willing to sit down and talk, talk through the issues with you." So, um, my, my front door's open, and I welcome any conversation that could come up.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs.
Mr. Richard Myron, the disabled vet. And if I recall, and Sandy, thank you for reminding, reminding me and, um, Karen, that we did do, for the Rex Center, passes for returning veterans. Can we verify that, and I'm sure that he's talked to staff, that there would be no issue with this, but I, I'd like to at least, Harold, maybe I already have an answer, but I would like to see what can be done to, at least, if it's, I can't recall, I haven't been out to UG in a while, is, is per vehicle or, uh, per, is it per occupant?
Let us look into that and provide council with the information on it.
Sure, I mean, I, I would have no problem doing what he recommends, but I'd like to know what, what, has, I'm sure he's talked to staff, but I'd like to know what they said. So, so we can, if we need to make an adjustment with potential, we can.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Uh, I, I've just got a couple of points that, uh, I want my fellow council members to think about. I know that it's common for us to call and email and talk, and, but I just wanted to spit it out there. I've had this conversation with Mayor Coombs, and, uh, don't think I've talked with anybody else, but, um, I want us to consider, uh, three different things. Uh, my understanding is that Longmont City Council a while back actually decided, and staff has followed for many, many, many years, the policy that Longmont will be a standalone, non-contiguous city. You know, we have open space, uh, we've got buffers to the west, we've got buffers to the north, the south. Um, so, keeping that in mind, I think that's all good, but, um, I want us to consider three things. So, not for debate tonight, just throwing it out there. One, um, to the east, Ward One, which I represent, uh, right now, it's kind of piecemeal. So, uh, one, I'd like council to consider, there's a piece of land, uh, out there, uh, right south of Highway sixty-six, that if we were to consider instructing staff to acquire for open space, that it would essentially be the final piece of that, or one of the pieces along the corridor for the final open space buffer. Now, if you're pro or against open space, that ship has long sailed. Um, we did it. So, the question becomes, do we or do we not want to go ahead and, and get that last piece of land, is open space? Um, the second question is, uh, right now, regardless of whether or not we do that, regardless of whether or not we are or are not a contiguous and standalone city, someone is going to develop between, uh, Longmont and, and I-25 along Highway sixty-six. Right now, Mead, Firestone, and Frederick are having a heyday out there. So, in addition to acquiring the last piece of open space, I think that we should consider some type of policy, as we're looking over a Longton, or, 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 uh, Longmont area comprehensive plan, of allowing developers to know that we would not be opposed to annexing them into the city should they develop on Highway sixty-six out towards I-25. Keeping in mind that whether you're pro or anti-development, if we don't do it, Mead, Firestone, or Frederick will. So anyway, not for debate, just putting it out there. And then last but not least, um, the third point would be to consider some type of resolution ordinance or, or, uh, lasting city action that basically would, that would change city policy to say, "We're not going to sell water to municipalities, um, within X amount of miles so long as they, so long as they plan on using that water for urban development," which would provide the eastern buffer that I think that we should have. So, um, again, just recapping, final piece of open space to close the buffer. Consider, uh, doing things that would welcome annexation of commercial development along the highway outside I-25 to capture, uh, retail sales revenues, um, as well as get our hat in the game for the, you know, the, the, the land battle that's going on out there. And last but not least, some type of, uh, water, uh, legislation that would make it more difficult for those municipalities to build on our doorstep. So, just think, something to think about, and I've been calculating on it, and I think we should start thinking about those things.
Thank you. Councilmember Christensen.
Um, I just want to thank Councilman Bagley, because I think those are really essential things for us to think about and have discussions about as we're going through the comprehensive plan and just thinking about the next fifteen, twenty years. Thank you.
So, um, I'd like to point out a couple of things. Our Longmont Boys Basketball Team is now twenty-three and all, and they get two home playoff games. The first one's this Friday, so hope we can support them. Um, I'd also like to give a shout-out to, um, Tom Dill, who I think's the best strength coach on the planet, bar none, and he does a lot for this community. He trains the girls' soccer team and volleyball team, strength trains, and helps them do drills, and also provides a lot of employment for high school kids, uh, uh, and, you know, he was out, uh, clearing the soccer field with this hand snow shovel, so they got a place to practice, uh, this Wednesday on Monday. So, uh, anyway, a big shout-out for, uh, um, also, I guess I'll put it on record, I don't know if, this is a big if, uh, but if there is, uh, at some point in the future, a, uh, fee for curbside recycling, um, I've made a personal commitment to Beverly Alkins, that I'll pay her fee entirely for five, five years, so, make that in the record. So I'm not sure how I do that, but I'll do that.
Make a motion. Come on.
Oh. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, and along those lines, it was mentioned that we've given ourselves a raise.
Yeah.
We haven't received any increase in, in, in our stipend. It's been, that's been set in stone for how long?
Fifteen years.
At least fifteen years? Yeah, and, uh, unlike Congress, that, that, that does, it's automatic for them unless they vote against it, so, we don't, we can't increase, and I think it'd be suicide, political suicide, if any of us tried to do that.
I don't make a motion.
Okay, is there any manager or any comments?
Mayor Council, we actually have one tonight. Aaron Fosdick, um, wanted me to remind council that we need at least one council member to serve on the, um, comp plan task force. Um, one or two we can do, so I, we need some direction from council. If you want to wait and consider that at another meeting, we can do it, it'll be a little bit late, but, you know, we do need comp plan representatives.
I, I would really like to serve on the comp plan, and I've got the time, and I know we have a lot of meetings and stuff, but, um, so, anyway, I throw my hat in the ring. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Um, I would support that, in fact, I would move that we appoint Mayor Coombs to, uh, to the, um, comprehensive task force.
Okay. Councilmember Christensen.
I think, well, I'm not sure how this is going to work, but I really think that there should be quite a few of us on the task force.
So, so one of the issues is, we will be bringing those items back before council for a broader council conversation. Um, we, I think, depending on the number you get into quorum issues in terms of who's on there, so council will be actively involved, and I have talked to Aaron about creating other options where we can bring council in on, on specific, um, discussions as part of that process. So, this is just the broader, um, I guess, advisory group.
Thank you. I, you know, I know that I've been a consistent squawker about, since I was elected to council many moons ago, about redoing the comprehensive plan, so I have had a, a really longstanding interest in this, so I would look forward to, to helping out with the effort.
Definitely, we're going to need all of council as part of the process. We need two representatives, okay, I guess, two, two representatives.
I volunteer to be another representative.
Okay.
We're good.
All right, we're good. All right, we're good. No.
Draw. Consensus? Consensus? Dean. No additional comment. Dean. Baseball.
Okay, city attorney, any comments?
Aaron, council, I am noticing our next meeting is March 17th, so the next two meetings are canceled for reminder for council and for the community, and after that, no more comments.
So, two weeks off? So, you get as long as Japan. Give yourself a raise. What the hell?
All right, this, this meeting's adjourned.